This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary Iverson, are we in compliance with open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please, for verification of form?
Commissioner Beeka?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Lugendil?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
And Commissioner Booth?
Here.
Perfect. We have a full board tonight and a full agenda also. Thank you all of you for being here this evening. Tonight's meeting will also be broadcast on Charter Channel 994, WRFP 101.9 FM, and online at ValleyMediaWorks.org and ECASD.us. That brings us then to the public forum. So we have a 30-minute time period in which citizens may address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items. Each citizen is allowed up to four minutes, and we have a timer on the screen. You have that chance to address the board. The school board will not hear personnel complaints or personal complaints about any person connected with the school system in the public forum section. So when I state your name, just come up to the microphone and share your name and address. Make sure that's on. All right. And we have eight individuals signed up this evening. Our first is Greg Nemeth.
My name is Greg Nemeth. I currently reside at 1928 Daft Avenue here in Eau Claire. Past three weeks have shown how seriously adverse weather can affect all of us. In all likelihood, every person in this room has a story to share about a weather-related incident. Many of us have been the beneficiary of the grounds crews who have cleared the parking lots at schools. Custodians have cleared sidewalks and entryways fighting ice and snow to ensure our safety. In some cases, they have struggled to keep classrooms warm. It is long past due their efforts are recognized and they are thanked appropriately. Thank you, district custodians and snow removal crews. How ironic that in the 18 years I have been associated with this district, these overworked and undercompensated individuals are often among the first to be affected whenever the district faces a budget crisis. They have been thanked with reduced hours, and in some cases, they have been the victims of a reduction in force. As is often the case with classroom teachers, we quickly forget how much we appreciate their hard work when budget problems arise. The number of school cancellations has also seriously and adversely affected a growing segment of our student body. Every day school is canceled, many students do not receive breakfast and lunch. Each cancellation means two missed school lunch program meals. Six weather cancellations result in 12 missed meals per student. I cannot extrapolate the number of students affected district-wide tonight, but let's use 1,000 for purposes of illustration. That would mean 12,000 meals were not consumed because of cancellations. In many cases, the double whammy of inadequate nutrition is coupled with frigid housing, which requires even more calories just to stay warm. Thinking about how this impacts our growing homeless student population is truly heart-wrenching. I know I am not the only person with these concerns. I realize we have school food pantries and emergency programs designed to help our students. However, if this weather is the new normal, the challenges to many of our students will only increase. We need district leadership combined with community input to determine a way to lessen the impact of missed meals on students. I also understand there are no easy solutions. This is, without a doubt, a matter of urgency which requires immediate board attention. Under the direction of the Executive Director of Business Services, would the board begin the process of developing a method of mitigating the impact caused by weather-related cancellations? We, as a community and the school district, need to address the physiological needs for our students as well as the intellectual needs. I believe the district invests too much of its budget in class development for students without financial, nutritional, and/or housing needs. Ultimately, which is more important, the health and well-being of all students in our district or superficial measures on the state's annual report card? Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. That brings us then to our second. I believe it says Kristin Nelson. Hi.
Hi. My name is Kristin Nelson. I'm at 343 Bartlett Court. So, good evening. I currently reside in the 3rd Ward. My oldest child will be attending Lakeshore in the fall as a kindergartner, but may be attending Longfellow in subsequent years. I'd like to speak about district plans to repurpose Roosevelt for an optional 4K program and redraw school boundaries on the north side of town while expanding south-side schools. I disagree with closing the vibrant and caring community of student, staff, and parents at Roosevelt Elementary. I previously worked in a before and after-school program at this facility. I can confidently say that the staff and students genuinely care for one another and create a safe and welcoming environment to learn and grow. District plans to repurpose this school and displace 285 current families to open an optional 4K program is misguided. Has introducing 4K programs at various elementary school sites throughout the district been explored in order to address the capacity issues at Prairie Ridge and make it more accessible to more families geographically? Could we convert Roosevelt into a 4K through maybe 2nd or 3rd grade school and offer grades 4 and 5 at another school to maintain the school as a pillar of the neighborhood? Could some of the south-side expansion dollars be used to jointly address capacity issues at the 4K by offering 4K at those sites as well? The transition would be made easier for many students and families if they could go to 4K and then kindergarten at the same location. After analyzing the fact sheet with current projected figures of school attendance in Eau Claire that I received at the listening session last week, I saw that Memorial North are at 85% and 80% capacity, and the middle schools range from 75 capacity at South, of all places, to 86% capacity at DeLonge, which are well within the parameters of the 65% to 100% goal for each school that the district has set. However, when examining the elementary schools, we see varied figures ranging from 54% at Locust Lane to 96% at Meadowview. Overall, the district-wide elementary school capacity currently lies at 79.6% with a projected maximum capacity of 82.5% for the 2021 school year. To me, this reveals school boundaries that need to be redrawn. But instead of framing this as a district-wide issue, separate north and south solutions have been presented, which divides the community and leaves north-side parents asking why their school is closing when they are paying for brand-new facilities with their property taxes on the south side. Why are we discussing expanding and building new elementary schools for $18 million when it would appear the district is well under the 90% threshold that Kim Kohler said was the point of concern? Has redrawing south-side boundaries to more equitably distribute students even been explored? And if not, why? How many of these south-side students are already bused to school? Could they be bused a little farther to better distribute available resources? It seems to be premature to be discussing $18 million for new facilities on the south side when we can be discussing how to most efficiently use the facilities already available when elementary schools are at less than 80% capacity. I would also like to note that based on the projected figures, it would appear that the capacity at north-side elementary schools increases from the current capacity, this doesn't include Lakeshore, 70.6% to a maximum of 78.2% in the 2021 school year, and decreases from currently 88.8% to a maximum projected capacity of 85% for south-side elementary schools. Finally, as some other ideas, could we expand Montessori options at other locations to relieve the strain on some south-side schools and reduce the number of families turned away? Could we pair elementary schools as they do in Madison? We can't be the only district to be facing challenges with the distribution of students. How have other districts handled this that didn't cost $18 million? I believe in the public schools in Eau Claire and believe in investing in them, but let's do this in a way that maximizes what we have and then ask for what we need. Thank you to the teachers, staff, community members, and parents that make this a great community to raise a family.
Thank you. Next is Ben Holman.
Hello, board and staff. In the spirit of equity, can I get a taller microphone, please? Thank you for the service that you're doing to the community. I know that the work you do and the difficulty of the decisions you make is not always recognized, so thank you for doing that. I've attended every DemoTrends meeting since October, and I've done a lot of homework to understand why they arrived at their recommendation to close Roosevelt. They're facing two fundamental problems, the undercapacity on the north side and the overcrowding at the south-side schools. In February, someone on the committee had the idea that they could close Roosevelt and use those students to solve their north-side undercapacity issue, and then they could use the money that was to be used at Roosevelt to solve their south-side capacity issue. It is a creative idea, and it does solve several problems at the same time, but I think that the cost of that idea is too high. To dismantle an elementary school that's thriving, that is working and growing, is too high a price to pay to solve those related problems. It's clear that DemoTrends is using two approaches to solve their north-side and south-side problems. On the north side, we're moving hundreds of students, and on the south side, we're looking at spending 18 to 20 million dollars on a school and moving very few students. I think there's a healthy alternative, and instead of considering what high school a child is going to go to when selecting their neighborhood elementary school, focus on preserving those neighborhood schools and let the boundaries end up where they are. So instead of worrying about someone going to north or Memorial, just consider where they live and where the boundaries may be. Right now, our north Memorial boundary is such a tender issue that I think there's a reluctance to address that in our community, to even bring up the idea of moving students from one high school to the other. But I think that this is an opportunity to grow more close together instead of splitting farther apart. By distributing our elementary schools and uncoupling them, decoupling them from our high school boundaries, we can start to grow a culture of this is my elementary school, some of my friends go to north, some of my friends go to Memorial, and over time, grow that culture up through our high schools and start to bring our community together as one district. Tonight, I need to ask you to direct the administration and DemoTrends to evaluate this sort of option. At the listening sessions, this has been a common request to say, we have 55% at this school and we have 95% at this school. That's a problem and a solution on the same slide, but we're not talking about that problem and a solution. We're talking about something totally different tonight. And they have asked, they have said that parents, excuse me, they have said that if the Board of Education asks them to make that analysis, that they will do it. So I'm here to ask you, please direct DemoTrends and the administration to evaluate our elementary boundaries on a district-wide basis, not on a north basis and a Memorial basis. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That brings us to Melissa Greer.
Melissa Greer, 2905 Ellis Street. Good evening. My name is Melissa Greer, and I teach 5th grade at Putnam Heights Elementary School. My students and I were talking last week about weather memories and how big ones stick with us. I shared with them that I will always remember 5th grade for the Halloween blizzard of 1991, trick-or-treating in the Twin Cities. They will always remember 5th grade for the endless cold and snow days. In my 16 years as a teacher, never have I experienced anything like this. Hopefully, I, we, never will again. We can all agree it's been a challenging few weeks for students, families, and staff. I understand that instructional time must be made up in order to meet state requirements. I was shocked and disappointed, however, when I received the email last Wednesday with a proposal that included this Friday, February 22nd, as a student contact day. There are three reasons why I disagree with the addition of this particular day. First, I believe attendance would be low. I had several parents in my room just last week on Valentine's Day, and each expressed concerns over the short notice because of plans that have already been made. It's very difficult to move forward in my curriculum with a high number of students absent. Second, since the calendar was published, this has been a scheduled day off for staff. Many of us have made plans for this day. In talking with my colleagues, these plans range from a fishing trip to Red Lake, to annual eye and dental appointments, to spending time in Wisconsin Dells with extended family. This is simply too short of notice, and I worry about the flood of absences in Aesop that could result. Finally, this Thursday, I will be conferencing with 27 5th grade families from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I remember several years ago when we changed to this conference format, and my feedback to you is that I absolutely love it. An entire day spent connecting with the families I work with, a day that I truly enjoy. That being said, it is completely exhausting. I'll be honest when I tell you that it would be challenging to go from 12 hours of conferencing to a full day of teaching. When a calendar is published, plans are made. Many staff members have already made plans for our scheduled days off of Friday, February 22nd and Friday, April 19th. Scheduling students on these days may result in a large number of staff absences. In trying to be solution-focused, I began researching and reaching out to colleagues around the state to find out what other districts are doing. I found many creative solutions, ranging from shortening passing times at the secondary level, to adding minutes to the beginning and/or end of the school day, to turning professional development days into student contact days. I am advocating that you look at a hybrid approach and a combination of turning some of our PDIP days into student contact days as well as lengthening the school day. We already planned to change April 22nd to a student contact day. We could do the same for PDIP days such as Monday, February 25th, and/or Friday, May 17th. I do not know the exact number of minutes that would need to be added after that, but let's say it was 15. I can think of many good uses for those 15 minutes. They would not be wasted. Most days, I'm left feeling, if only I had the time, too. Now, maybe I would. I believe that sticking to our published calendar as closely as possible will be the least disruptive to students, families, and staff. I encourage you to think about this as you make your decision regarding how we will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Matthew Holtz.
My name is Matthew Holtz, and I live at 3121 Milton Road. I'm here to represent students that are concerned about the snow days that have to be made up. I feel that it would be in the best interest of the students to lengthen the school day instead of just adding on days to the end of the school year. This reasoning comes from AP classes. As you know, the AP test does not change the day just because one state has a few days off because of snow. And with that, the days are lost, and with AP classes, most of them, at the end of the year after the test is taken, they don't really learn new materials because you already took the test. And with that, the added-on days are more or less wasted on doing nothing and just watching videos or movies. And I feel that instead of that, we should add on time to classes so that we can learn more and try to be better prepared. And we shouldn't just take days that are already off and have us go on those certain days, such as this Friday and Monday. We should, the notice is like too short to, like, make a big impact on attendance, and that after the ACTs, students need to be able to, like, take time off because it's such a rigorous test that is very complicated. And I, myself, having to take it this upcoming week, am very stressed about it, and I would prefer to not have to go to school the day after finishing them. And with this thinking, I feel like most other, if not everyone, would also agree in my classes. And that is all.
Thank you. Next up is Denise Ralston.
Hello. My name is Denise Ralston. I live at 2706 Preston Road in Eau Claire, and I'm the head cook at DeLonge Middle School. And Melissa Greer very clearly spoke about the school year calendar, and I totally agree with her, so I will completely cut that out. The big concern that I have is that food service staff are required to have a serve-safe certification. This certification assures that our staff knows how to safely handle food so that our clients, who are our students, not only have good food to eat, but that it's prepared safely. New employees must take this class, as well as employees whose certificate is expiring. This class was already scheduled at our back-to-school meetings in August. It's scheduled for next Monday, February 25th. 20 of our food service staff are scheduled to take the class. We don't have enough subs to cover that many absences. That's my big concern about school this coming Monday, and I'm wondering, is there some way that there can be a combination of both days, instructional days added into the calendar and minutes added on to the days? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mark Goings.
My name is Mark Goings. I live at E17450 County Road V in Augusta. And first of all, I just hope as a board that if you consider taking a vote for just, like, let's have good weather the rest of the year, done with all that other stuff. As my role as President of the Association of Educators, I do want you to know, when you're looking at their proposals, I've not had any concerns brought to me about the use of the 25th of February, and I've not had any concerns brought to me about June 7th. The 22nd, being as close as it is, is one that I've had several people bring concerns about. As you can imagine, as an educator, you try not to be gone during the school day, so when you see that, that one day out there a month from now or six months from now, that's tends to be scheduled with a lot of doctor's appointments. We've got, it's Berkey weekend, for those of you that don't know, and the half-Berkey is done on Friday, and so there's people have been training all year for that, and they have their race time at 10 o'clock in the morning on Friday. There's this person who's moving from one house to another house that has the moving company set, and they're ready to start carrying boxes on Friday. And so just keep the human side of that in mind as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And finally, we have Kelly Hendrickson.
My name is Kelly Hendrickson. I live at 1324 Caden Court in Eau Claire. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to talk about growth. I'm the mom of three Roosevelt Tigers and also the PTA president. Since building and completing our home in 2016 in Aspen Meadows, which is north of Highway 312, we have seen tremendous growth in the Roosevelt Boundary area. 19 single-family homes are in my neighborhood, and 18 twin homes were built in the next neighborhood over. The land to the north of my home will be developed in the near future into 30 single-family homes. On my drive to school in the morning with my kids, the next growth you will see off of Jeffers Road is Green Park Twin Homes. There are 22 new twin homes and room for four more. If you continue down just a bit further on Jeffers, you will see Camden Place, a new development that has 67 lots with 37 of those being twin homes. At completion of this development, you will have over 100 new residences. As we cross Highway 312, we see the new North Ridge Apartments being built across the street from the mega gas station. These will be 1- and 2-bedroom apartments slated to be finished by spring of this year. If we drive a bit farther off of Hewitt Street, you would see the estates at Highview, which has 20 single-family lots, and only four are still available for purchase. All of this development is within the 2.4 miles it takes for us to get to school in the morning. Now, there's also more planned development north of Highway 312. Per information from the city, there are 20 acres of land to the south of Camden Place that has been purchased by a developer and will be developed in the near future. There's also a 70-acre parcel of land directly to the west of the new Jeffers Ballfields. While this land is currently zoned light industrial, the sign says it can be changed to residential, and the city's comprehensive plan for that area shows a mixture of single-family and twin homes, although no developer has stepped forward yet. So we have had a substantial amount of growth in a small area in a short amount of time. Now, the boundary maps that have been provided by the Demographics and Trends Committee show that in any of the proposed circumstances, all children living north of Highway 312 would go to Sam Davy. At this point, Sam Davy could handle the 73 students from Roosevelt by shifting some of their students to Locust Lane, but what will happen in the next few years is Camden Place and the other developments finish their building. I'm worried that Sam Davy will become the next Roosevelt, and boundaries will need to be shifted again, and kids will need to be uprooted from their schools again. We've been repeatedly told that the seven north-side schools have 850 open seats. While that number is true, that would mean that every school was at 100% capacity. We've also repeatedly been told that schools enter a watch list at 90% capacity. So when you calculate what each of the seven north-side schools would need for enrollment numbers to reach 90%, you are left with 559 open seats. If dual immersion is approved, we have been told that 150 seats would need to be held at Longfellow for that program. That brings the open seat number down to 409. If Roosevelt is closed and all 285 of our students are absorbed into the other schools, the number goes down to 124 open seats at 90% capacity. All of the development that I have described could create a problem with that few seats left open, not to mention the Highclare second phase and the possible approval of the apartments in the Cannery District, which fall into Lakeshore's current boundaries. Our city is growing, and we shouldn't be looking to fill every available seat in the district. Neighborhoods ebb and flow. Retirees looking to downsize will sell, and families move in. Let's pause and really take a look at the needs of our growing community. Thank you.
Thank you. That then concludes our public forum section of the meeting and brings us to our board and administrative reports. Dr. Harabat.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the events for the upcoming school board events. All of the meetings, with the exception of one, take place in the administration building. The next one will be the demographic trends and facility planning committee meeting, and that will be February 21st at 4:30. The LEAP committee will meet February 25th at 4 o'clock. Budget Development Committee will meet at 1:00 PM on February 26th. The Equity Review Committee for the all-night graduation parties will meet at 4:30 on February 26th. Policy and Governance will meet March 4th at 8:45 AM. The school board meeting will be held later that evening at 7:00 PM. Then on March 5th, Family Advisory Council will meet at 7:00 PM. The school board candidate forum will take place March 14th. That will be held at 6:30 PM at CVTC's Business Education Center. And I did want to call the board's attention to the Chippewa Valley Rally, which is an annual event put on by the Chamber of Commerce. They will be traveling to Madison to talk with legislators about local issues, and that will take place on February 20th. And it starts really early in the morning. If you're interested in going, if you would contact Patty Iverson, and she will get you signed up. And you can either drive your own car, or you can ride a bus that the chamber provides. And I also want to call your attention to the summer school catalog, which will be sent, and I think there's one at each of your desks. This will be sent to all families this week, and it lays out the plans for summer school, how to register. You can see, it's a bit thicker than it was last year, but that's because we have more offerings this summer. So I encourage all of you and all families to look at this book closely. And then to follow up on Mr. Nemeth's remarks, I do want to thank the Buildings and Grounds team for all of their help during the snow event, but there's also another group of people who work behind the scenes notifying, sending out messages, making sure that the campuses are prepared, making sure that there are people on those campuses to receive students if they show up and don't have a place to go for the day. There's a big team of people, administrators, what we call our kind of critical employees, essential employees, who have to be here to make sure that the district is still in operation. And those are principals, their secretaries, their technology people. All of those people help out. All of those people help out and come to work on the snow days. So I want to thank everyone. This has been a very, very trying time for the school district, and I know for families as well, and we certainly appreciate everyone's understanding and patience as we've dealt with the weather. So, thank you. And I'll have one more announcement after the employee report.
Sounds good. Thank you. Well, for my report tonight, I first want to thank local readers for voting me for the third year in a row as your favorite local elected official in Volume One. But I have to raise your attention to two even more important categories, which I really love to see. On page 33, if you pick up a copy, in the category Best Use of Taxpayer Dollars, first place, Public Education. And in the category Most Underrated Thing About the Chippewa Valley, first place was teachers. So we have a great community, and I think that the poll is very accurate this year. So I also want to bring an article to your attention. It was on the front page of the Leader Telegram on Saturday. Check it out. Its title is "Vaccine Exemptions Concern Local Health Officials Amid Measles Outbreak." Really important topic, really important public health issue. So you can learn more about vaccination by visiting vaccines.gov or immunizeforgood.com. And I want to thank the work of the Eau Claire City-County Health Department on promoting immunizations in our schools. I want to remind community members that we have four more listening session dates scheduled regarding elementary school boundaries and 4K needs. We had one tonight, which was in Spanish, and I'm looking forward to hearing how that went. But we also have another session that will be held on Tuesday, March 5th, at 4:30 p.m. at South Middle School. On our district website, we have an information page that includes history options, a timeline, charts, and it also includes an FAQ, so you can send in questions, and they will respond to those on the website. The format of our listening sessions begins with an overview of information and background, and then goes on to opportunities for feedback at the tables, and then to the whole group. Board members, we receive the written note comments, as well as minutes for each session. And all of the sessions are also being recorded, video, and played back on our website. So I want to thank Kim Kohler and her assistant Karen for all of their work in leading those listening sessions and helping to keep them run smoothly. And that is it for my President's Report. Student Representative Report. Who wants to go first tonight? Molly?
All right. So to begin with, students have just finished signing up for courses for the following year, which have allowed them to utilize their guidance counselors for advice and any questions that they had. Seniors who do not have to sign up for courses for the following year are beginning to plan for and finalize their post-graduation plans, whether that be entering the workforce right away, or attending a technical school or a university. Additionally, many classes, especially the AP courses, are scrambling to catch up to and stay under the schedule due to the recent weather. And finally, juniors are gearing up to take the ACT this week, and the rest of the student body are just hoping for forgiving weather for the rest of the week.
Everything Molly said, that is extremely true. At Memorial, we participated in code signing this Sunday, and Orchester had its Italian Dinner. I think with all the cancellations, definitely our AP classes are concerned, but we'll see how that pans out with the decisions this evening.
Then that takes us to our School Board Committee Reports. Policy and Governance Committee?
We met this morning and have proposed text for and first reading for new policy 453.12, Concussion and Brain Injury Management. And then we are, we will continue to discuss an exhibit for facility fee schedules and another one for advertising, which will be, should be ready within the next month.
Thank you. Budget Development, is there a report?
Oh.
Is there a budget development coming up on the 26th? Yeah. Oh, we're gonna reschedule that. Yes, possibly the 27th, but yeah. Been a little bit haywire with the weather. Understood. LEAP, is there?
We are also rescheduled to the 25th, so.
Lots of rescheduling. We're rescheduling the Revenue Committee, too, so lots of different rescheduling meetings going on. All right. Are there any other committee reports? Okay. Legislative update, Commissioner Torres?
I would like just to mention that we, as a district, are members of the Wisconsin Public Network, Public Education Network, and we are engaging other organizations to help citizens develop the skills to tell their stories, their own stories, and advocate for greater funding for public education. So I would encourage all those who are in attendance and watching it to touch base with us and take advantage of this opportunity. Next training session is on March the 9th.
Great. Thank you. That brings us then to our Consent Agenda, so I will read through each of these and entertain it as one motion, and if you would like to pull one, please let me know. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2019, the minutes of closed session, January 7th, 2019, the minutes of closed session, January 9th, 2019, the minutes of closed session, January 29th, 2019, the minutes of February 8th, 2019, the financial report, January 2019, the 2018-19 budget adjustments, gifts in the amount of $71,322.19 for the period of January 1st, 2019 through January 31st, 2019, payment of all bills in the amount of $5,312,532.06, and net payroll in the amount of $3,500,515.27 for the period of January 1st, 2019 through January 31st, 2019, the Human Resources and Employment Report, five-year capital project bids, referendum bid awards for Locust Lane and Northwoods Elementary Schools, and disallow insurance claim. So I would entertain a motion to approve B through N.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we will do a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambachboyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Herter?
Yes. Thank you. And that brings us then to our individually considered resolutions. The first is consideration of the proposals for inclement weather makeup days. So are you presenting?
I am presenting, and I'm gonna ask Patty to run the... Thank you. So I will start out by saying that time is of the essence. We have very little time to make up quite a bit of missed time and mis-instructional time, and there are a number of considerations that you're going to have to weigh, not only in terms of how we make up the instructional time and how it affects staff and students and our testing protocols, but also in terms of costs and in terms of convenience to families. So I'll begin by talking about our alignment to the strategic plan and the need to really make up these instructional hours, our, with our academic achievement, our social-emotional growth, and our partnerships with families and the community. When you look at the weather days that we've had, you can see by this chart that we have had, as I think everybody has said, we've had this very unusual and out-of-the-ordinary winter. As of today, our schools have been closed or delayed by weather nine times. Seven of those days were full day cancellations, and two days included two-hour delayed openings. If you look at this weather days things, you will see that typically the five days that we have built into our calendar to cover inclement weather days have, they've already been used. We can see this year that we have five dates that we were able to utilize through our current calendar, and that goes down to February 4th, 19. We could use our April 22nd makeup day, which had been designated on the calendar, but we are not able to absorb four dates. We had a two-hour delay on February 6th, a cancellation on February 7th, a cancellation on February 12th, and a two-hour delay on February 13th. Our concern is that we may have more two-hour delays or more cancellations, so hence the urgency to make a decision. As you know, last week I sent a letter to staff and to families outlining our options, and we've received a number of messages, some from individuals, some representing groups from schools, some representing groups from staff, and some just, you know, weighing in, yes, you have to do what you have to do, and others with very specific recommendations. And so we've used that feedback to modify some of our original proposals and to give you some options. And I ask that as we go through the options, let's get through all of the options first, and then we can go back and answer any questions that you have, option by option, and I'll probably be calling on Kim Kohler and Jim Schmidt to assist with some of the instructional questions that you have. So as we look at Option 1, Repurposing Non-Student Days, based on the feedback that we had from some staff and families, the first option has been modified. This option repurposes non-student days within our current calendar. This is the option that we shared with our families as the first date impacted is this Friday. Within this plan, we would use the following dates. February 21st is currently an elementary and middle school students are off for parent-teacher conferences on this day. We propose that both students and teachers come to school for a full day and cancel all winter parent conferences. If parents wish to have a conference, they can contact the teacher on a case-by-case basis. On February 22nd, we're proposing that elementary and middle school students would have off on this day, but high school students would attend, and this would help us to make up time that they need for AP courses for their CVTC courses, for their certification courses. On February 25th, this is currently a professional development and instructional planning date for staff, and students are scheduled to be off. We propose repurposing this to a regular day of school. On June 7th, the option does extend the school year by one day. We would ask students to return on June 7th to make up for the delayed openings. So as we see it, there are some benefits and challenges with this option. This option allows us to recover full days of instruction, which I think are always preferable to having a few minutes here and there. It would give days of instruction prior to AP and other high-stakes national and state testing, such as the forward exam. The district and community summer programs would remain intact, and there might not be a need to reschedule any of those activities. We believe that this option might impact fewer days overall, and we could possibly have a hard stop to the school year, which we've heard through our feedback is very important to families at the end of the year. And we think by using this kind of option, we are more likely to have a hard stop. This is a cost-neutral proposition. It's cost-neutral for transportation because we are exchanging canceled days for new days. We do not incur any additional costs. But there are some challenges to this option, and they include the fact that we know that families and some staff have already have prearranged plans on these days, and it will require us to swap professional development days and planning time for instructional time. As we looked at Option 1 feedback, we received the most feedback from Option 1. And I have to say that out of the approximately, probably ninety-five-hundred people, which is a combination of families and employees that could write to us, we've received about .01% of feedback. Families and staff who supported this option indicated that snow days have caused additional childcare costs or lost days of work for families. This would, this plan would prevent additional cost to families. Children have lost nine days of instruction, and this is critical time for students. It's preferable to extending the school year, and families have asked that students resume their normal routines as soon as possible. Those who have asked us not to consider this option have said that family and staff already have made plans for the February dates, and the time is too short for makeup, and high school staff may need to arrange for childcare on February 22nd. So that's Option 1. We also have Option 2, and this is adding additional minutes each day. Rather than recovering full days of instruction, we would look to add minutes to each school day between March 1st and June 6th. You can see here there are two options for additional minutes. Option 2, we would add roughly seventeen minutes per day to each school day from March 1st through June 6th. In doing this, we will make up all required minutes, but we will not have a cushion for any late starts or any additional closures. Option 3, if we added thirty minutes per day to each school day from March 1st through June 6th, this would not only recover the required minutes to make up, but would also provide a cushion should an additional inclement weather days occur. So the benefits of this option is that the district and community programs remain intact, the school calendar remains the same, adding to the beginning of the day is feasible for student transit, but this would have middle school students starting sometime around 6:55 a.m. or 7:00 a.m. It is not feasible for student transportation to add minutes to the end of the day. However, there are some challenges. If time is added to the end of the day, it creates a conflict with Prairie Ridge, with the private schools, and with extracurricular busing. So that's why we have to have an early start if we add additional minutes. Additional hourly staffing costs would range between ninety to $180,000, and this would have to do with overtime situations, and this is based upon the seventeen minutes to thirty minutes per day of additional time for hourly school staff. There would also be a need for additional car seats for early learning in students with special needs, and I'm not quite sure how Mr. Phi would accommodate these extra seats, but it is, it is a need. And then there's an additional $79,452 for transportation for either option. This translates to an additional two to five minutes per day. It's hard to kind of recoup the impact of a loss of instructional days with just this much time added to each day, but it is a possibility. And family and staff are impacted over sixty days instead of three or four days, and then there are potential conflicts with community activities for students. So that is the option 2 and 3. And then we have options for makeup days, and... And I can tell you that this was probably the least popular of anything that was proposed. And we did hear from a hand, we did hear from people talking about that. Some of us contacted us to support this option and indicated it was a good way to avoid extending the school year. So when I talk about the least popular option, that is in extending the school year. Extending minutes was, I think, received favorably. But those who cited some challenges with this options indicated that community feedback prefers minutes added to the end of the day. But logistically, that's not a feasible option for us. We would have to go at the beginning of the day. Students have jobs after school, and their employers depend on their meeting those job requirements. So that could present a problem with businesses. And we did hear from some businesses in that regard. And this would cause some children to miss portions of activities that they already have scheduled after school. Everything from mental health therapy to private lessons to tutoring. So those are some of the considerations for that option. And then we move to option four. And this was the least, this was the least popular of extending the school year to recover the necessary instructional minutes. Given the current inclement weather days, we would need to extend the year to include June 7th, June 10th, June 11th as school days for children, and June 12th as the last school day for staff. Now, there is no guarantee that this plan would work because if we have additional delayed openings or we have additional snow days, then we would have to keep extending the days of the school year. The benefits of this option include that you recover full days of instruction. Families and staff are impacted on fewer days overall. It's cost-neutral for transportation because you're trading one day for another. It's expected to be cost-neutral for staffing. But there are some challenges. Families and staff may have pre-arranged plans for these days as well. District summer programming and community partner programs begin after June 10th. And that's, community summer programming would have, be impacted. For example, ECASD Summer School for Elementary School Classes in Grades K through 5 at Montessori, Metta View, Putnam Heights, Robbins, Roosevelt, and Sam Davy would have to be rescheduled. The middle school discovery courses, some of them would have to be rescheduled. Middle School Band, 6th grade lessons, this is the week that they start their program. High School Credit Recovery Programs start this week. High School Discovery Courses begin this week. Husky Boys Basketball Camp, which are elementary and middle school camps, are scheduled for this week. And our facilities are scheduled throughout the summer. So there might be a possibility we would have to cancel those. Husky Fund and Fundamental Wrestling Camp and Husky Elite Wrestling Camp might have to be rescheduled or canceled. Abe's Volleyball Camp, Old Abe's Girls Basketball Camp, Strength and Conditioning Programs in our partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, CBTC High School Credits, Chippewa Valley Theater Guild Classes, Eau Claire Children's Theater Classes, Parks and Recreation Programs. And there's 160 sections that began that week. Parks and Rec River City Adventures, the UWEC Upward Bound Program, and the YMCA Classes would also have to be rescheduled. I think a piece of this that sometimes gets overlooked too, and I think there were people in our public comment and in our reports who referred to this. And that is that for our high school students, the AP courses end and the testing ends at mid-May. And so the additional time, instructional time would come a little too late for these courses. So the options, this option yielded feedback. Some of the positive feedback included that traditional practice, it was predictable for families and staff. And staff would have more, and families would have more time to arrange for childcare. Others stated that this interferes with summer school programming. Some programs would be dropped with our community programs. It interferes, doesn't make up the instructional time in the time that's needed to meet the accountability measures. And the business and community groups are counting on students, some of them to work during that week of June 10th and the following week. So those were some of the negative feedback that also accompanied people who have already made vacation plans for the day that school's out. So we presented a number of options for you. I think you heard in the feedback, in the public comment, that some people are wondering if there could be a hybrid. We have not looked, although we've looked at a hybrid, it's very difficult to figure that hybrid out and still make sure that we have the cushion that we need in case we have other days for closure and other delayed openings. The, there was a suggestion that we have makeup courses and instructional time electronically or through technology. We don't believe that the state will approve that measure. And then we got a question that's asked why the governor doesn't just forgive the days that we've missed. And we've been told that that is not likely to happen. So, what?
Doesn't have the power to do it.
Right. He has said that he does not have the authority to forgive those days. And I think that even if he were to propose it for the legislature, there's no guarantee that it would go through. And then we would be stuck trying to figure out how to make up the instructional time. So I know it's a very difficult decision for you, but it's a decision that must be made. So we'll just open it up to your questions. You can go to the next, oops. Well, this might be a good slide to leave up, but we do have a kind of a fun slide for you to look at and think about the snow. So now you can go back to the other options.
Reality.
Yeah, reality check.
The previous.
Okay, let the fun begin. Who wants to start? Commissioner Torres.
Thank you, Dr. Harbeck, for your report. I would sincerely hope that we can not include February 22nd as a day to makeup. And think probably in April 19th or May 27th as makeup days. And then I would have a question. How many minutes per day during how many weeks would work as a cushion? If we had February 25th, June 7th, May 17th, April 19th, and May 27th as makeup days?
So there is an issue with the April 19th date, and that is Good Friday. And according to state statute, teachers and students have to be free from 11 until 3 o'clock in order to attend religious services. So that has typically been a day when we've been closed. We also got quite a bit of feedback that there were many more plans already adjusted for that weekend than for other weekends. So having it on April 19th is probably not as feasible. May 17th, is it May 17th? Do you want to speak to that?
I can. May 17th is a professional development and instructional planning day, but only for elementary and middle school. High school students are already in session on that day. So if we use that day, we'll recover minutes for elementary and middle school, but wouldn't recover any time for our high school students.
Perhaps that could be compensated with longer days for the high school, not for the elementary and middle.
Are there any days on here that are closed for just high school? I'm sorry, yeah, closed for just high school and the others are open? Where we could?
February 21st.
February 21st, oh, okay, well.
And the, the issue with adding minutes to the high school day is that we have, we already have early bird classes that take place. And because we've been told that in order to add minutes, they have to come at the beginning of the day, that's an additional complication in terms of making up that instructional time.
Can I ask, I'll ask a question about February 25th. I, if that's a feasible date, I haven't heard much about February 25th other than from the individual who spoke about the food service consideration. I'm wondering if someone can speak to that, if we have enough subs available? Ms. Johnson?
So we actually have a plan for that. And we were, we're waiting for an important decision tonight, but we have already talked with the vendor about rescheduling because obviously we're concerned about the shortage in subs as well.
They talked to the trainer about?
Yes, about offering it at another time, possibly at the end of the school year.
And that would still meet the obligation, is this?
I believe so. Yep.
Okay.
About May the 27th?
For May, um, May 27th?
Yeah, that's Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. I think that, we can't do that one. May 17th we could do though, correct? But that, but again, that was only covering for one piece of it, so that doesn't help us. But February 25th, is anyone opposed to February 25th on the board? Because I'm thinking I should just, we should just start telling what we're, what we can, what we can't add onto the solution here and just start a list going of what we can. So is February 25th?
I mean, I'll say, I've been watching emails, and I've seen a lot of concerns in about February 22nd. I've seen very few about February 25th, surprisingly. I mean, they're, they're so close to each other, but.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think that probably the big difference is February 22nd being a vacation day, a time, a day off for staff. They've scheduled their surgeries and all of that. But 25th, they're already planning to be there. So yeah, I think that the 25th would, we could live with that. I mean, obviously, no matter what we do, some people are going to be inconvenienced, but we have to do it. So. May, the, are there any other days that we could, as low-hanging fruit that we could live with? Yes, Commissioner Torres?
I think that Dr. Harbeck's proposal to use February 21st as a school day rather than having parent-teacher conferences could be something that we could consider.
Well, I.
And I know that parent-teacher conferences are very important. But considering the circumstances, maybe we can reschedule that at a different moment and in a different way.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure if we'd be able to reschedule it, but I, I would wonder that, just logistically about the, I know you had said in the presentation that if you were to, if you were to have school that day, that families could, I mean, obviously, this is what, this is in three days. So I mean, this is, that's a really short, that's really, really, really short. But the other aspect of it is the ability of, I know that, you know, individual parents can contact the teachers to schedule, but I feel like that could turn into kind of a logistical nightmare on the part of the teachers to have to.
Well, the, the beauty of having February 21st is that staff are already scheduled to work on that day. So we understand that parents may have other plans. But that would be a day that, you know, we could, we could make up easily with staff. And they, they shouldn't have anything else planned on that day because it wasn't an announced workday. And I do think that in terms of the conferences, it's just an unusual year. You know, we'd like to be able to do everything that we want to do, but we may have to sacrifice some things. And this may be one of the things that we have to sacrifice.
Commissioner Hambuck, well?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the parent-teacher piece. Those are, I'm sure most teachers have those prepared. And it is such an important piece of sitting down with parents and really having that dialogue. I remember at the preschool level where I spent most of my life in education, we were able to count the hours that we worked with parents. So I'm wondering if a full 12-hour parent-teacher conference day cannot already be counted because there's a connection to kids? Because it is at the preschool level, I don't know.
It's not an instructional day. It has to be, we have to make up instructional minutes.
Oh, maybe, okay. I'd have a hard time at this short notice on getting rid of parent-teacher conferences.
With a lot of parents who take, they have set times of the day that they take off for parent-teacher conferences. So a lot of them have probably put in a request for time off or whatever. Would it, maybe it's a crazy idea, but I know that they've done it at some schools where they have the parents come in during the school day and spend time in the classroom. If, if, I don't know, if that would be a logistical nightmare or? I see some teachers like, someone was like, and then someone was like, no. But I'm just wondering, is, in terms of being creative, you would still have the engagement with families, but we could have the instructional time? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I would just say, you know, once again, if you have school on February 21st, that is an announced day for everyone to work. The change would be on February 22nd where only the high school would be required to go to make up their instructional minutes. And the elementary and middle school would be off that day.
Commissioner, Commissioner Harder, then Commissioner Klinkhammer?
How many days are we trying to, four, I'll tell you. And with minutes added, the 17-minute option?
That just gives you the time that, so.
Does that account for four days?
We have two and a half days that we have to make up. We're trying to get four days in case we have delayed openings or another closure.
So the 17 minutes does cover the lost time, but with no?
The two and a half, the two and a half days. In order to have a little bit of a cushion, we would need 30 minutes.
So again, with a hybrid though, we could get away with 17 if we did a hybrid of taking a couple of days, just full days, and then doing 17 minutes. Is that?
You could do that, again, keeping in mind that you're going to be starting very, very early in the morning. And, and that's, you know, that's certainly an option.
Because of early bird, especially.
But for early bird classes, that's very, very early.
Yeah, yeah. Has, has student trans, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes, student transit has looked at all of these options. As a matter of fact, we have Jim Phi in the back somewhere. Think he's, yeah, he's in the back. But he's looked over all of these options and advised us on what student transit can and cannot do and the costs.
So, but part of what you said was my question, which was how many days are, do we actually have to make up versus how many days are we trying to cushion for? So if we look at, really, we only need to make up two and a half days. And we take, let's say, the February 21st. And Chris, as a former educator, I'm with you, that feels really uncomfortable. But this is a, seems to be an unusual situation. But if we, if we look at that, so we've got February 21st, we're back on for a student contact day, and February 25th, and then June 7th. What we're gambling on is that we won't have any more snow days. And so if we did have more snow days from, from that point, we would, we would, we would have to reassess and maybe, maybe be forced to go later in the year, add minutes to the day, or come back and make another decision. If we gamble that those are, we're not going to need another snow day, really, we've got it covered with the 21st. really, we've got it covered with the 21st, 25th, and the, and the 7th, I think is what you're saying. Thank you.
And we would still have May 17th for elementary and middle school?
But the, yeah, and the big, but the problem, I think, is that the...
But the problem is that we need to make up the minutes for high school.
And February 21st won't help with that either, right? Correct, so February 21st is the same in ter, as far as the, it won't, it'll help us as much as the May 17th would. Because it won't, it won't be the full picture of making up.
So perhaps the high school needs to add minutes to the day in some way, maybe shortening something.
Can I speak to May 17th? And the problem is that there's no recovery for high school. So if that day were used for elementary and middle school with online learning for high school as, as the equivalent at a different time. So it's a mixed model. But that would be the day for recovery with high school educators making a plan for the e-learning.
I don't know that we can guarantee access for every student through e-learning.
My mic isn't working tonight, so I'll speak loud.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering why you were raising your hand.
Well, I, I think we're making good progress. We just need to finish making the decisions.
Right.
Uh, February 25th, it's a good start. And the no for February 22nd is another strong suggestion. I would challenge the idea that we looked at the priority of the district. And Dr. Hardebek mentioned earlier, right on the first slide, saying that academic achievement is one of our top priorities. So June, summer school generally is secondary. Student need to work, secondary. It's not in the olden day where farmers need children to be home to help around the house. So I would say we push the date as far as we can in knowing that high school, I mean, knowing that summer school activity may need to be rescheduled, not canceled, but pushed further. Because that's secondary. Primary is having class for a student so that academic result won't be changed or shortchanged. Please.
I agree with everything you're saying. The issue, I think, for our high school students is the instructional time that they have missed for their advanced placement classes. And that time cannot be made up after May 15th. Or that, the middle of May time because their tests take place in those first two weeks of May. The other thing is that state and national tests all take place at the end of April through May. So any instructional time that we add at the end of the year doesn't prepare the students in the way they need to be prepared to take those tests. And that loss of instructional time then truly becomes lost for them.
I will have the mic again for my last point. The 21st, I believe, can be looked at for makeup date. And parent teacher conference can be, A, online, two, individual, three, possibly break the conference to a smaller piece. A teacher would schedule to meet with one to three student after each day of instruction. So line up between now and whenever they're finished. It's better to delay the conference than delay the classroom instruction. I'm speaking based on a parent's value. I understand there may be other parents who have hardship in making up in that fashion. But if we're able to add 21st and 25th, we only need to find half day. So the problem is 80% solved. And we just go along with Mark going that, that there won't be any more snow. And if there's snow, we need to make this, a decision as it come.
Commissioner Torres?
I was thinking, I agree with Commissioner Vu. Parent teacher conference could also happen through the phone at the end of a day. It doesn't need to be in person, right? And finally, if we do, if we include May 17th, then it would work for elementary and middle school. And perhaps we just need to find a solution for high school. Which doesn't need to be at the end of the semester, in June. Could be earlier, maybe at the Monday of a Saturday. I'm not going to be liked, but...
He, he didn't say Saturday.
Did you just say school on a Saturday? Commissioner Torres?
I've seen it happening before.
Okay.
I don't know if that's realistic in terms of logistics, but...
Let's, let's start voting on just a couple, let's just vote one day at a time and see what we can...
Can we just, can we just, if we're gonna, can we just settle the question of Saturday? And just, it sounds like it's totally logistically impossible from, based on this reaction. Can we just confirm that?
You want me to confirm that?
So we can settle that question?
I think when you're trying to recoup a day within the week and that becomes problematic for families and staff, I think trying to recoup a day on a weekend is even more so. That's just my personal opinion, but I, I don't have any data to back that up. Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, well, it works for me as reasoning. Are we going to, are we going to leave the Saturday question aside? Or do you want to include it in the...
I'll remove it.
I'm wondering with the February 21st, one thing that hasn't been mentioned is that I could be mistaken, but I don't think that that was in the original stuff that was communicated out.
No, that was a modification made based on some feedback that we got from staff. And saying, why would we not go to, not have students go to school because they were doing parent conferences? And then come back to school? Could we just, like, have school on the 21st? And for staff, it's already a workday. So it doesn't present the same logistical challenge.
So it would, it would be, it wouldn't be a 12-hour workday?
No, it would not be a 12-hour workday. That's why we wanted to cancel the conferences.
Okay, so let's, let's, does someone want to make a motion to schedule classes on the 21st?
I move to have classes on the...
Because I'm looking, put it on the table and discuss. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Vu. And open for discussion then. Commissioner, because your light on, I can't see with the microphone, okay. Any discussion on that?
Well, I'll ask a question.
Okay.
I, I would not be, I would not be willing to vote in favor of February 22nd without a plan, coupled with a plan for conferences.
Oh, we're talking 21st?
21st is what I have.
Oh, okay. But coupled with a plan for conferences.
Well, at this point, the only thing that I could say to you in terms of a plan is that we would ask teachers to try to accommodate a schedule for parents who wish to have a conference. We do not believe that every parent will wish to have a conference. But we would ask it to go school by school and have principals work with their staff.
I guess my concern is, and I, I'd really like, I'd really like to hear educators' perspectives more broadly on this, but when you look at the research on effective schools, especially, especially at the elementary school level, the parent-teacher connection, especially through parent-teacher conferences, tops, it always tops the list. And I think about the people who are not going to conference are the parents that have the least, I mean, the privileged parents are going to conference. And parents who have the least opportunities are not.
Could I...
You know, I, I'm not, I'm not confident that that is, is accurate. I mean, I think that, that our teachers are very on, on top of the progress of students. And I, I feel that if, and I, maybe that feel is not the right word. I firmly believe that if there is a need to talk with a parent, our teachers will step up and do that. And that they will make an effort to contact those parents. I think that's part of the, kind of the work ethic of our teachers and the, and the, the value that they place on those, on those parent conferences. I just think this is a very unusual year.
Could I ask about, specific to what Commissioner Bika is saying that she wants to see a contin, a, a replacement conference date? We've talked about May 17th as a potential makeup day and kind of wrote it off because it's, it would only help elementary and middle. So I'm wondering, could May 17th be a replacement conference, parent-teacher conference day? For elem, at the, at that level?
I think it comes too late to be able to have necessary interventions. And I, I'd like to speak to that point, but it's not, my point was, I, I'd agree with you completely in terms of, from the teacher's perspective and connecting with families. And I understand, my point is that when, it's the families that have barriers. It's not lack of the teacher's part. It's a, an inability of families because of all the challenges they face to be able to connect. And that's a reality.
Commissioner Hambuck, well?
I have a couple of questions about late starts and the fact that they were put on there. Are we, are minutes so minutely put together that we are not over any minutes? Usually, we have, when we had late starts, they weren't accosted against us. But our minutes on our calendar are so stringent into what we have. We're, we've, we've got them that closely given IPPD days and when we're not seeing kids.
Well, I think that, you know, one of the things is that elementary schools do have a few, sorry, elementary schools do have a few more instructional minutes than middle and high schools. So there is a possibility that we could continue with conferences at the elementary school. But middle school needs to make up the instructional time. So we might have to, I mean, that is, that's a possibility.
Can you explain why? So is that another option on the table to say that February 21st can still be conferences and they still have enough minutes to, to make up the time with what we already have up there in option one?
So Kim, can you speak to that, please?
So if we look at the requirements, instruction at kindergarten, let's see, kindergarten through grade six is 1,050 hours. And grade seven through 12 is 1,137 hours. So right now, each of our schools runs the same calendar. So when we calculate, we calculate on the greater of the two. So we, we provide elementary students with 1,137 hours, even though the requirement is only 1,050. So there is a little bit of a buffer with elementary school in the current calendar. Middle school does not have a buffer at all. Well, we did, and then we used them in late January, when we had the four and a half or five days off. So the buffer that we had built in was all used up. So moving forward, elementary would have more hours banked just because we plan both elementary and secondary around the greater of the two.
Thank you. So we have, we have a little leeway there then for, if we want to use it or think about it. Thank you.
Are there any other, Dr. Hardebek, did you have? Are there any other questions or comments on the motion, which is to add February 21st as a makeup day? Okay, saying none, then we'll do a roll call vote for this?
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuck Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries five to two, correct? Secretary Everson? All right, so we have one. I would, I move that we schedule classes on February 25th.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote on that one, too. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote on that one, too. I made the motion and Commissioner Torres seconded it to, schedule classes on February 25th.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuck Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Okay, so we have two dates.
June 7th.
June 7th has been discussed. Are there, now, could you walk us through what June 7th currently is? Is it already kind of a partial day for some students, Dr. Hardebek? It, it isn't at all. It will just be moving the last day by one day. Now, are any events, do we know of any substantial events, whether it's camps or programs that start on that Friday?
No, it's a, it's a workday for staff.
And we, and the major things that, like YMCA, Parks and Rec, that stuff all starts Monday, June 10th? Okay.
Well, can I ask, would staff have to return on Monday?
No.
But they lose time closing up their classrooms and all of that, that they count on, correct? I mean, they count on that time, that last...
So typically, on those days, usually staff begin to check out, you know...
I was asking last door.
Their checkout, yeah, their checkout process usually begins around 1:00.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other comments then on that? So I, would someone like to make that motion that we schedule classes for June 7th?
I would move that.
Okay, Commissioner Vu, thank you. Is there a second for that motion? For June 7th?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Klinkhammer, thank you. And we will do a roll call vote for this one also.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambuck Boyle?
I should have asked a question, so I'm, and since my question's not clarified, I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries six to one. So we have classes scheduled for February 21st, February 25th, and June 7th. Yeah, Dr. Hardebek?
So I, I thank you for making this decision. I know it's a difficult one. I know it's not going to please everyone. I know we will have people who are unhappy about the decision. We are just going to have to hope that we don't have any more closings or snow days. And, and we'll move forward with this.
So at this time, if I'm correct, Dr. Hardebek, we don't need to make any more decisions at this time? We'll cross that bridge if we have to later? Or do we need to still make one?
You, we still have high school that, you made up three days for elementary and middle, but only two for high school.
Okay, so what options do we have for high school still on the table? Not the 20, not the 22nd though, others. May, what'd you say?
They're already in session that day.
They are in session that day.
May 17th, they are, okay. May 17th, they are, okay. Just looking through the calendar again.
Can we reduce the lunch time?
It's already pretty short.
I'm trying to be creative.
Online is better.
Lunch online?
Online lunch.
Virtual lunch, that's healthy.
Can we reduce the times of each period?
I.
To build an additional period?
Commissioner Hambach?
Does that work? No, that doesn't add minutes.
That doesn't add minutes, no.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle, do you have a solution for it?
Well, you know me, I'm always thinking of things. So, you know, in the spring or whatever, we have those wonderful days where our kids are connected to the community and they go out and they do their community hours and their community connections. What if we had, you know, planned between now and spring, a Saturday that is a community and public schools day for our community? And do something like that as a, no?
It doesn't make up the instructional minutes. The, the original proposal was to have school on February 22nd. The elementary and middle school students would have off on that day, but high school students would have to attend.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Could you, could we, how many, this is maybe more math than I want to do. But how, could you add minutes to a high, to the high school days? To make up that one day? I mean, it wouldn't be the full 17.
We could add minutes, there will be a cost associated with that.
Could you alternately, I'm going to be super unpopular, but could the high school go one extra day? Or does that create, that creates its own set of problems, doesn't it? Can I speak to the adding minutes just to the high school day? The, one of the challenges in that would be transportation, as many of our routes are shared between middle school and high school. So if we add minutes to one and not the other, I'm not sure feasible or not. I think we would need to ask Mr. Fai if that's feasible.
I'm also thinking that if those, if that, well, I don't know. I, our original proposal was that they go on that, on that Friday. So if that's not acceptable, we're going to have to figure out something else to do in the meantime. And I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it will be cost neutral.
Commissioner Harder?
Can, can we just look again at the 19th and the 22nd? I think the 19th was that Good Friday, and that was the one.
Right.
So what's the, so the 19th, we, could you have early release on the 19th?
We could have early release on.
No, I know, I know it's Good Friday, I'm just wondering, can you?
I mean, we could certainly consider that. I think it does present a problem because it's typically been a day that, you know, because of the state statute, that we haven't had school for, you know, to allow that kind of religious piece there that's required by the state.
What time would we legally have to have the end of the school day, that day?
We, students and staff have to be free between 11:00 and 3:00.
That does, does that count for the half day?
If you have three hours, is that a half day?
Yeah.
We need four hours.
Four?
That plus minutes? Half, half day on the 19th, on April 19th, plus some minutes? Or what about the 22nd? Sorry, yeah, the 22nd is, what's the story with that?
I mean, that'll cost, so the 22nd, April 22nd?
Yeah, April 22nd is a.
We've already, we're already using April 22nd, that's a.
That's a day that, we've already absorbed that.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
We had that discussion this morning.
Okay, May, no. Are we required to, do, can we not have school May 27th? There's the parade. So there's a lot of students. No, 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 I know, but I'm saying that the, we already have a lot of students involved in those activities. So you wouldn't have, I mean, and that's for a lot of hours of, and there's also tournaments, right? I'm trying to think what all. The athletes would love it, is that what you said?
On Memorial Day.
What'd you say?
Could we legally have school on Memorial Day?
Can we legally have school on Memorial Day?
You could have school on Memorial Day. I, I think you would run into many more conflicts than you would on the February date just for high school students.
Yeah, I mean, that's an actual, yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking for high school because I eventually have the 27th cushion, the, no, May 17th cushion.
Are the, yeah. Any other, Commissioner Harder?
No.
I was hopeful you had something for us. April 19th. Has, yeah, has anyone mentioned spring break?
Nobody wants to say.
The word "spring break", I didn't, no, she said it, she said. Well, right in between two weekends, yeah, that's.
Now, anything we do for high school is going to have a cost, right?
Yes, well.
Other than the 22nd, yeah. The 22nd is cost neutral. The 22nd also makes up the day. You know, they're, I mean, I don't want to be a pessimist, I really don't. But we could be looking at more days that we would necessitate as maybe to either add on to the end of the year or go into spring break. And I don't want to do that, I, you know, I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. It seems like it's, it's kind of the, what's the lesser of two evils?
Can you, can you speak at all, Dr. Hardabek, to the impact of possible absences and et cetera on the 22nd?
I think there will be absences, yeah, I, because I think people have made, you know, plans and things. So I do think there will, there'll be, there will be absences. But at least we can offer the day as an instructional day.
Would any board members like to make a motion regarding any other days on this calendar? Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
So right now, we have February 21st, the 25th, and June 7th.
Yes.
So, and we need to make up how many days?
One day for the high schools.
We need one day for the high school.
We're good on elementary and middle now, we'd need to make up one for high school.
So the answer's in this room.
I'm sure it is.
Does it need to be one day, or is it, are we, are we good with half a day for us?
How many, how many minutes do we have to make up for one day at the high school level?
You would need seven minutes from March 1st through the end of the year, per day, to make up a day.
And what does that equal for the rest of the?
It would put you a little over the top, it's like four, you said 66 days. You need 407, it would put you at, 66 days times seven would put you at 462. But if you did six minutes, it would give you enough, so you'd need seven per day.
So what would that look like if that, you know, as far as busing and all that goes and money and cost is seven minutes per day? What would that look like?
You could possibly, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to talk to the high school principals about this. But you could possibly shorten the lunch schedule. I just don't know if you could get all those students fed, you know, in 20, 23 or 25 minutes. So, I mean, I would, I would, I, I just, I don't know. But you could, you could possibly recoup some time doing that.
Can we ask the student rep, see what they think?
I'm looking at their faces.
Taking seven, wait, so we're talking about taking seven minutes? We're talking taking seven minutes from lunch for the rest of the school year, right?
It would get us a day back.
Starting March 1st.
Starting March 1st.
So, could we involve, would students be allowed to bring their lunches back if they couldn't finish them back into that next period? Would there just be an understanding for the rest of the, would, I mean, is that something logistically that we could do?
I think it depends on the class. If you have a chemistry, for example, you can't bring food in there.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, how long are our lunches? 30 minutes, maybe a little bit less? I think we could make it work, but what about passing time? What if we took a minute off of passing time? I know Memorial is six minutes.
Shorten it to five?
Well, yeah, and then that would be your seven minutes.
Passing, passing time is counted in the student minutes, so it does, it would help you.
Okay. Passing time is counted in minutes of instruction currently? Oh, so we did, so we can't, if, whether we change that, that won't have it. So the, so the lunch?
But the lunches, there's actually, what, three, right?
There's three lunches.
So it's, it's not seven minutes off of everybody's lunch?
So we could, so if we took two, like, two minutes, two and a half minutes?
Or three minutes off everybody's lunch.
Three minutes off of everyone's every lunch shift at the high school level, starting March 1st? Would that solve it? Is Kim doing the math right now for us?
I was looking to see what the Good Friday statute said. Yeah, three minutes times 66 days?
Well, no, three, three times three times 66, because it's three minutes off of each lunch period. We'll have nine minutes shaved off of lunch, starting March 1st. If we had nine minutes shaved off of lunch between the three shifts of lunch, for 66?
594. But for the individual student, it's only three minutes, correct?
Oh, so it'll have to be.
Yeah, it has to be.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, but we said 66 days? Is that what it was?
Yeah.
So, and how many, and how much time do we need?
Seven minutes per day.
No, no, I'm saying, how many, how many hours, I mean, how many minutes do we need left? No, in, in high school? 407. So if we shave three minutes off of the high school lunches starting in March, we'll save 198 minutes? At least that's my math.
I think that would, yes, and I think that would give us a half day. It's 6.17 minutes, times 66 days equals a full day. So three minutes off lunch would give us a half day.
Okay, so Commissioner Hambach Boyle, and then Glenn?
So if we can do that at the high school level, could we do that at the elementary level? And they could get their parent-teacher conference day back? And then everybody's doing the same thing?
Elementary students have 20 minutes for lunch.
Well, maybe there's a, maybe there's a different way of doing it at elementary.
I think that ship has sailed.
That ship has sailed.
I think that if, if you don't want to entertain the February date for high school only, let us work with the high school principals to figure out how we can recoup that day in minutes. That's the only thing I know to suggest at this point. I think to have us up here trying to figure out minutes and perhaps making a miscalculation doesn't serve us well. So if, if you can vote to let us try to recoup those minutes at the high school level, we'll bring in the high school principals and see what we can work out.
Would someone like to make a motion of that effect?
Can, can we sort of pre-approve something about Good Friday in case something emerges there? Or do we need to, or do we just wait and see?
You, you want to make the motion to direct staff to make up the one day of instruction for the high school level within the minutes that they have? Okay, so who would second that motion?
I'm sorry, was the motion for high school students to go on Good Friday?
No, no, the motion, the, that's not the motion. The motion is to direct administration to work with the high school principals to identify through the non-instructional minute, non-instructional minutes in the day where we can, where we can find additional time to make up that missed day. So we have, we have one possible solution with shortening some lunch pieces, and I'm sure there's more, so. Did someone second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, and let's do a roll call vote for this, unless if there's any other discussion. Okay, so seeing none, we'll do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I just, I just want to remind the board, if we have any more missed days or delayed openings, we will be back at this, at it again, back to the drawing boards. But hopefully, we won't have any more days.
All right, yeah, and difficult decisions to make.
Can I ask a clarification?
Oh, yes.
Tomorrow night is conferences for middle school? Is that unaffected by all of this, or, or by the conferences on Thursday? Did that affect tomorrow? Because 3:30 to 7:30 middle school conferences are tomorrow.
I don't believe we made any change to the middle school conferences.
We didn't make any change to the middle school calendar.
Okay, so I don't see, are there any other, I guess, comments from board members on this? Or we have the, oh, yes.
I will just support Commissioner Harder's question whether we could use April 19th as a possible makeup day or half day if we need, because of snow, future snow.
Thank you. All right, so then that takes us to our next agenda item, which is petitioner David and Sarah Senior's request to alter school district boundaries.
Dr. Hardabek, there was an announcement that you wanted to make after the consent agenda. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, we kind of got lost in that. With the, with the approval of the employment report, you approved the appointment of Joshua Gutenberg for the position of Director of Food and Nutrition. Josh, are you, you're here? Yes, there you are, thank, thank you. Josh is coming to us from the Oshkosh area school district, where he currently serves as the Assistant Food Service Director. He has some significant experience serving public schools through food service management. And he also has a wealth of food service and management experience in the public sector through restaurants, hotel banquets, and university dining. Josh holds a bachelor's degree from UW Stout, and we are looking forward to his joining us. Josh, I will tell you, you have very big shoes to fill with Sue Brown's departure. But we're expecting big things from you, and we've heard wonderful things about you, so welcome.
You picked a really fun first board meeting.
So are you going to be just presenting an overview about all, all four of these first, Ms. Kohler? Or will you do each individually?
I just want to provide you with a little bit of background about why we have four petitions today. So we actually have four petitions, I believe, two for attachment and two for detachment. So I just want to give you a little bit of background on that. You know, although you receive attachment and detachment petitions annually, it's a little bit unusual. The families that are petitioning today were all impacted by the same clerical error that occurred sometime in the last four to five decades. So we have a map, I think, that Patty could pull up. And when she does, can you pull that up, Patty? She's getting there. You'll see on the map, once it up, once it's up, that there really was no rhyme or reason to which district the homes in this neighborhood were assigned to. And so we, that's the neighborhood, it's out by Elk Lake, I believe, okay. It's out by Elk Lake, and Patty, if you scroll down one more, there we have it. The yellow properties are one school district, and the pink properties are another school. The yellow, um, properties are one school district, and the pink properties are another school district. So you can see there where some of the pluses are, or Xs, um, those are the folks that are petitioning, and, um, they may be, uh, assigned to one district, and their neighbor is assigned to another. So this is the kind of area that doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you look at it. So what happened was, um, as a district, we looked at this, and, um, Eau Claire started to ask some questions about how were the properties in this area assigned. So we talked to the county about one of the homes in this area, and then when the county examined the records, they realized that an error had been made, um, and several homes, including the four that you're going to hear about tonight, had been assigned to the incorrect district literally for decades. And so each of the families that's petitioning tonight is asking to have their home reassigned to the district that they believed they'd been part of for the past forty to fifty years. So in, um, November of this year, they received a letter that said, "We know you haven't moved," and, and, um, no district lines have been redrawn, but you've switched districts. And tonight, they're just petitioning to say, "We, you know, we've been in Eau Claire for forty to fifty years, we'd like to stay," or "We've been in Elk Mount for forty to fifty years, and we'd like to stay." So I just wanted to provide you with a little bit of that background information, um, before you hear their stories.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. So I believe, per the, per the petition process, each, each individual has the opportunity to come to the microphone and speak to the board, and then we have the opportunity to, um, ask them questions and have a dialogue, and then we, as a board, have to consider, uh, a motion either to approve or deny the request. Am I correct?
You are, and I forgot to tell you that in order to do that, we have to suspend the rules.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the, uh, items B, C, D, and E petition requests. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. All right, so the rules are suspended, so anything can happen. And now we're at item B, which is, uh, David and Sarah, is it Senor? Senor, do we, are they here this evening?
Some of the families couldn't come tonight.
Okay, so, um, it appears in looking at this request that the, um, if approved, the district would retain two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and dollars in property value, and we would also, um, have three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents in real estate taxes. So is there any more information anyone needs on this before making a motion? Yes, Commissioner Torres?
What does Elk Mount say?
Well, it says the Elk Mount School Board has not voted on this request yet, but they will do so before the end of February.
So can we vote requesting those properties be transferred or considered within Eau Claire without, knowing what they want, what if they want to retain it?
And they, they, they very well might, and they have that, that's their prerogative as a board, is they can approve, they can approve a motion to, um, to, to deny the request. But we can, but, um, we can approve a motion to, uh, to approve of the request.
And then that starts a process for them that goes to the higher, to a higher level?
Exactly, there's the opportunity for, and if, if both parties are not in agreement, and it, and nothing changes, there is the opportunity for an appeal with DPI. So we're doing, we're fulfilling due process by, um, entertaining the request. Okay, are there any other, oh, Dr. Harder, did you have, okay, um, yeah, Commissioner Klinkhammer?
So, um, the, the Senors, they've always been in the Eau Claire district. They, they always have believed themselves to be in the Eau Claire district, it's just that the records reflect that they're in Elk Mount.
That's what it looks like.
So do we know if they've sent children through the Eau Claire district? Do we know?
I don't know specifically which family, we've spoken to each of the families, and there are families who do not have children now, that have sent their children to Eau Claire, and they just want to stay, they, they want their property to stay in the Eau Claire district.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is Commissioner Torres', uh, idea that Elk Mount might refuse this, but if the children are already going to Eau Claire school, I think that would make it more likely that they wouldn't, that they would force the kids to, to move, so I guess I'm just looking for a little more background on what that situation is. I suppose they would have a, an appeal process at that point, if Elk Mount did refuse.
Yes. Commissioner Torres?
In the past, we have had, uh, citizens coming in person to make their case.
Yes.
In this case, we don't have them, so perhaps we need more information from them.
I would, um, I guess, for me, I'm looking, I, I'm kind of looking strictly at the dollars and cents and the logistics of retaining property as a, as a school system, and in the interest of a contiguous land boundary, so, that, I would, as one board member, I'm in a, I would be in a position to, um, to, uh, approve of their request, but I understand if others aren't. So, um, I guess, uh, do other board members have a, or, um, yeah, Commissioner Torres?
But we don't know exactly what the situation is.
Right, no, we-
So how, how could we vote if we don't know the situation?
Well, we, the, we have to, legally, we have to vote by the end of February. So we either have to meet tonight, we either have to vote tonight, or we would need to logistically schedule a special meeting. So we, um, we, if, if it's, if it's, uh, if, if the majority of the board would like to have a special meeting later in the month where we could make sure that they're present, we could certainly do that. But I, uh, I guess, in the interest of time and just, uh, the, the logistical nature of the request, and what it means for the school system, as, not even just, not even considering what it means for an individual family, but what it means for the school system as an entity, I would consider the request tonight. Commissioner Klinkhammer?
But we, we do know that what they're saying is they want to, to come, the Senors anyway, want to be in the Eau Claire district, they, they want to move from Elk Mount to Eau Claire. So if Elk Mount denies it, they're going to deny it. I don't know why we would deny, at least that first one.
Yeah, I would think we would want to approve.
If they want to come to us.
Yeah, it's, I mean-
We, we would want to leave it to Elk Mount to make the denial.
Exactly, and, and we've, that's been our precedent, that we've set the last several years of these votes that have come up, so. Um, I guess, would it, would there be a board member who would entertain a motion to, um, approve the request of this family?
Some of them.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this, this petition? Uh, Commissioner Torres?
Can we move to pending Elk Mount decisions?
Well, we have to move, uh, irrespective of their decision, we have to just, uh, uh, move to approve or, or deny. And then it's their prerogative as a board to, to vote, so.
All right.
Yeah, okay, so the motion on the floor is to, um, approve this petition of David and Sarah Senor, and we can do a, a voice vote for this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Okay, that motion carries, and that brings us to the next, uh, petition, which is from Ralph and Donna Shager, Shager. Are they here tonight? Okay, um, so it looks like a relatively similar case, um, and relatively similar, uh, property even. Uh, I'm sorry, not a relatively similar, similar property, but relatively similar, um, situation. The district would retain one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in property value, and two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents in real estate taxes. So would someone like to make a motion to approve this petition?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All right, any other discussion? Okay, um, we will do a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Okay, that brings us then to, uh, petitioners Brent and Casey Carpenter, uh, and their request to alter school district boundaries, are they present tonight? Okay, so if you, if you have anything you'd like to share, you can come up to the microphone there, and, uh, we have your information and your address and everything, so you can just, uh, go ahead whenever you're ready.
If you look at the map up there, we're actually the X that's furthest to the left. We're on the west side of Elk Creek Lake, so, um, we have three sons, and one of them is already, um, graduated through Elk Mount, so we'd like to stay in Elk Mount's system. Uh, we have two young kids right now that are not, um, of school age yet, but we're just planning for the future, and we'd like to stay in Elk Mount. We're in a neighborhood, as you can see on there, that everyone is in Elk Mount, so there's only like three or four houses that are actually, um, in Eau Claire County, we're right on the county line there. Eliza Wilson Road is actually nine ninetieth also, it's Dunn County line, so, um, that's actually why we want to stay there, uh, the busing system is from Elk Mount, and they go past the house currently, uh, they stop before and after, I don't believe there's, um, there's an Eau Claire bus that goes out that far past the lake on the other side, I'm not exactly sure.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's about it, we've, uh, you know, we just want to stay in the, in the district that we're in.
And when your child enrolled in the district, it was just automatic, you didn't have to open enroll or anything? Because of the clerical error, they just recognized that they were an Elk Mount student, correct?
That's correct, that was, uh, about eighteen years ago that I moved to that property, so.
Okay, um, are there any, uh, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, can you ta, can you point us out again, which one is your property?
Uh, the first one on the left, um, to the west side of Elk Creek Lake.
Got it.
Eliza Wilson Road.
Yep.
Okay. It is interesting to see how these boundaries are so wishy-washy. Okay, are there any board member questions or comments on this? Would, uh, board, any board members like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve their petition.
Okay, um, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Okay, that motion carries unanimously to approve their petition, so.
Thanks for your time.
Good luck. Okay, and finally, we have, uh, petitioners Michael and Jane Endel, and their request to alter school district boundaries. And are you, Michael and Jane, hi, would you like to say anything? You can, if, you'd have to just come up to the microphone if you would. Would you turn your microphone on, Mr. Schmidt?
So basically, we're, we're right here, this is our property right here. I know that there is not there, that's, we did right there, and basically, we just, uh, we just want to stay in Elk Mount, just, um, Elk House there, like, thirty, thirty years ago. And we just like to, we like, uh, stay in there with all, all the neighbors, we bought it for, um, that's because we wanted our kids to go to school, and then we thought it'd be a best part if, uh, people that wanted to come over to Elk Mount would want to buy that house, because it'd be in the Elk Mount food district. That's why we, that's why we built out there, for that reason, we searched the land out, and we found it, and we took it over, just for that purpose, and we were in the same situation as Brent, and we know them guys, and, uh, our older kids went to school together, um, and that's just about it.
And just discovered you were not in the district you thought you were in?
Oh, yeah.
Kind of late, yeah, okay.
Yep, kind of surprised, like, what? But, thank you.
Thank you. Are, uh, any board members have questions for the petitioners or comments?
I guess I have a question.
Commissioner Bika?
So you, you do not have any children that would be going to Elk Mount schools?
We did, we did.
But you do not any, okay, and, I'm sorry, could you show where your property is, is actually located?
So the X on the little yellow thing there, that's your house? Oh, oh. Okay, so where, which one did you say was yours? Oh, we don't have it marked. Oh, okay. So it was just a little error, we made a, okay.
I know the error.
Yes, all right, well, uh-
So the other difference is that your property is not fully surrounded by other Elk Mount families, like, that, that would be another difference from the prior speaker.
It does have all Elk Mount areas, there's nobody from those.
Is Eau Claire pink or yellow?
Eau Claire is yellow.
Can you scroll down, Patty, and we'll, we'll see the key.
Between Senors and our property, there's like a cul-de-sac for being, that nobody else can, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Yellow is Elk, Eau Claire.
Yellow is Eau Claire. Yes. Pink wants to stay pink, yellow wants to stay yellow. Well, any board members, uh, Commissioner Bika, and then Commissioner Hambuch Boyle?
Well, I, I see what you're, I see what Commissioner Bika is talking about, I know, um, given school, given school funding, and looking at increased enrollment is always something we do now as we've been hurt by underfunding our public schools. So, you know, as we talk about, um, looking where you are and Eau Claire, I mean, you're sitting on a corner with Eau Claire School District across, across the ravine, you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, you'd have-
Okay, all right.
We're also not talking about the current owners, but sort of hypothetical potential future owners, and we couldn't know that they would necessarily prefer Elk Mount schools over Eau Claire schools.
What a mess. Okay, well, um, would any board, are there any other board member comments or questions? So we need a motion to either approve or deny the request from Mr. and Mrs. Shager. I'm sorry, Endel, I'm sorry, Endel.
I'll make a motion to approve their request.
Motion to appro, approve, okay, is there a second on the motion to approve? Okay, um, and we can do a roll call vote for this one. Unless if there's more discussion. No, I don't see any.
Okay, Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Approve.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
No.
Commissioner Hambuch Boyle?
No.
And Commissioner Harder?
Yes. Okay, and that motion carries five to two. Thank you, um, that is it for, uh, the petitioners' part of our evening. Thank you for coming, and you're welcome to stay if you'd like. We're now moving on to our committee reports, and our first committee report item is regarding a potential ECASD virtual charter school, and I believe we have Mr. Oldenburg and Mr. Seveland speaking this evening.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Seveland, and I appreciate the opportunity tonight to present, uh, work that the Teaching and Learning Department has done the last several months about a potential Eau Claire area school district virtual charter school that is not impacted by snow days, start time, there's no individual extras time you need to add, there's no PDIP days you'll need to collapse, as you review this, this presentation. So, um, we worked hard to link the, um, project to the board goals, um, goals of whole child and, uh, reaching social, emotional, uh, growth of all students, um, including some that sit currently in the Eau Claire area school district, but outside the programs that we offer. We've worked collaboratively with members of the community, and, um, worked to, um, focus a climate and culture that wraps around student learning in the, uh, presentation you're about to see. So, uh, the Wisconsin Department of Education's definition of a virtual school is as follows, you can see in front of you, it's a virtual charter school, it's a specific form of online learning. It's the only form of online learning which allows an open-enrolled pupil to participate- It's the only form of online learning which allows an open enrolled pupil to participate remotely without having to physically attend a school in a non-resident school district during all the days and hours that the school is in session. That's the definition from DPI. So you can see that a um creation of a virtual charter school is um sacrosanct in this work. So the existing ECASD policy that you have in place, Policy 331. It is the policy of the Eau Claire Area School District to consider the establishment of a charter school and staying current charter schools as provided by federal and state law. So previous DPI guidelines will guide us. The Board of Education believes that creation of charter schools is an alternate educational approach that enhances educational opportunities for students and increases its diverse student body. So that's the preamble to the work that um that uh we've engaged in predominantly led by Mr. Seveland. So Drew will talk about some of the um nuanced points of the uh project here in a moment, just quickly to give you some history. In the summer of two thousand and eighteen, um we began uh work on this uh proposals as directed by members of the board and executive team and uh the first meetings were held with uh folks in the community that may have interest in a virtual charter school as well as ECASD staff into the fall that have some um expertise or some background in virtual learning and blended learning or online learning. So initial research was conducted and advisory team was formed. So we have an advisory that is made up of ECASD family members, um folks in the community and staff folks. Um and then as we moved into this uh, this uh fall and winter, we developed a um potential governance board. Right now, an advisory team that has um given advice on the work that we've done um from the fall till, till now and that board, that advisory team would be a potential governance board or an iteration of a governance board if a charter was um s- uh selected to be formed and then partner with ECASDs. Now, Mr. Seveland will take you through some of the details of the advisory and then some of the um nuts and bolts research behind the work to show the efficacy of a potential charter school program for the Eau Claire District.
Thank you. Um at first, we started with an advisory and just to kind of pre clarified, because this gets a little bit confusing as we're going through the process. Uh we really started with an advisory just to figure out uh not only is this a viable direction for us as a district, but also um within really any charter, charter school, but especially within the virtual environment. There's a lot of different ways that you can model it and there's a lot of different ways that it can look. Um and so we, we tried to um have as, as many different people in the room as, as we possibly could, even at those initial stages. And that's really what this looked, um looked at is, is could we get a small group of people together? Um but a, a group that's a good cross cut of our uh community and especially, it was a really intentional group to pull together, um where we tried to get some voices from our homeschool community. Um and then also, you'll, you'll see a couple of names up there that are, or um a couple of members were from the McKinley Charter School. Um and initially, we were exploring the idea of combining it with McKinley Charter. That's something that we've gone away from now just because it looked um the, the deeper we got into it, we, we really discovered in this group helped us discover it. Um that the, uh really the missions were going to be very different for those schools. So it was worth exploring at first, um but it was something that we discovered just as we were going through that discussion. Um so initially, um we started looking at uh really what are the virtual charter schools in the state of Wisconsin? Um and then how do they look? How do they behave? Um what are some of their um high points and low points? Um so a lot of the high points and um things that actually aren't up here is, is flexibility. Um ability to uh access to education for students with some um really severe physical impairments. Um there's, there's a lot of pluses that um that actually you can see out on commercials all the time of I Forward and Rural Virtual Academy and things like that. And, and many of those are, are very real benefits of doing a, a virtual charter school. Some of the things that we discovered that, that aren't on the commercials um are some of the student achievements. Uh and the, the student achievement that we found in virtual um charter schools is very uneven. Um and in a lot of ways is, is not very good. Um so one of the things that you'll notice up here is this is color coded and it's size coded. Um I don't know if a size coded is a thing, but whatever. Um and, and so like the size of the orbs is really student enrollment. With the, the biggest ones being about five hundred students, the smallest ones being about fifteen, twenty students. The real small ones are black because they don't report data. They don't have enough students in the grade, in the grade levels that um, that the state is asking for, for, for them to have to report.
Do you know what the threshold is for that?
Sorry, what?
Do you know what the threshold is for that?
Uh, I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so I, but I know it's very, it's specific age groups. So you can have four hundred students at a different age group and it doesn't impact you unless you have them at I, I want to say it's third grade and eighth grade, but um, but yeah, it's, I'll check on that. Um and then also the, I put a blue category of exceeds expectations because that's something that we do see in our traditional schools across the state of Wisconsin. And there are no exceeds expectation schools as far as virtual schools. Um there are some that really compete with our um traditional offerings. So um the big green one on the other side of the state is uh, is one that's chartered out of Appleton. So it's Appleton, it's Wisconsin Connections Academy out of, out of Appleton, so. Um and we can talk about that a little bit. Um one of the patterns that we saw, the things that are really shaping this map. Um the, these schools tend to struggle in a lot of different ways. Um but the two biggest ones are math achievement and um graduation rates. So and graduation rates impacts obviously the, um really those older students. Um dropout rates are a lot higher. Uh even the, the orbs that are green on this map have significantly lower graduation rates than Eau Claire Area School District. Um and then math achievement uh is very, very poor across the board with a couple of exceptions. So Appleton would actually be an exception to that. Um but most of these schools are showing very, very poor um achievement rates. So uh one of the ones that, that's one of the bigger schools that we looked at. Um they have eight percent of their students proficient um at, in mathematics, which is extremely low. Um when we're looking at that. And there was a um, there was a Stanford study that came out in two thousand and fifteen that showed on average, virtual um students and they, they studied sixty thousand students. On average, they were losing a hundred and eighty days of math instruction per year. So it's basically the entire year they weren't improving on math. Um so and we don't know why. We just know that that's a thing. Um as we're looking at data and it seems to be very consistent in and out, so. Um possible models. So there's a, uh this is where it really depends on how um this project projects, uh progresses for how it's going to end up looking or, or if it progresses. One would be ECSD um teachers leading instruction. So our local teachers actually leading instruction over a two-way or creating their own Canvas courses, which is our um learning management system that, that we have in our district. Basically creating courses and then um sending them out to those uh possibly homeschool students, open enrolling students or students that we already had who are choosing to go through that virtual school. Um another one would be um we contract with a provider. Uh so uh there's a, a lot of providers out there, um which shouldn't be shocking um because there's a lot of money to be made in this. Um some of the providers have very high achievement, some of them have very low achievement. Most of them are in between and struggle in math. Um and with that, the, the nice thing about providers is um students could choose from a lot of different courses. Uh whatever that provider offers, so they could choose from um like elementary Mandarin Chinese lessons to um music lessons that were uh that were put together in collaboration with Juilliard. Um or they could take really any high school class under the sun, things like that. Um so those are, those are really nice. The other thing is, is they typically come with tech support and a lot of the things that we would need to build an infrastructure for here and get really used to. Um these options too can be really combined. So and that's what a lot of the districts that we've talked to do is they start with a provider just to make sure that they can cover everything um and do all of the different aspects of what a school really does as far as programming goes. But then they also add in wherever they have opportunities to with their existing teachers. Um and then what they, what a lot of schools have done is try to build their existing teachers capacities and replace those purchased um courses as well. So over the course of ten years, it really might change. Um and it might be more locally driven than driven from a, an external provider. Um so the advisory basically morphed. And um when we started discovering that we might have the wrong people around the table um and then also that if we are going to take the next steps, even to bring it formally to you for approval, um we actually need to have the right people around the table and draft a, a proposed charter. Um so that's what we've begun doing. So we have a, an, um, a, a potential governance board. It's not a governance board until um this week if they choose to incorporate themselves. Um and that's a process that we really need to go through, um crafting articles and bylaws. Uh basically doing all the formal stuff so that they can come together, sign a proposed charter to officially bring it to you for consideration. Um so that's, that whole process and I'll, I'll show you a list of things that need to get done in the next month and a half um here. Um that all has to take place before it can even come to you um for a vote. Uh but we are working through that right now. Uh the governance board, uh as it stands currently, we have four homeschool parents. Um we have community partners, so um somebody from the L.A. Phillips Library, somebody from UWEC, somebody from CVTC, we have three business leaders, a principal, um a teacher and um three people from Teaching and Learning or Teaching and Learning Department down at the district office. Um and, and just one thing to note with this too. We might have one or two members choose to leave and um one or two members come on to the board. But right now, we have one-third of the members on this board are ECSD employees. Two-thirds are community members and that's really a proportion that we're trying to keep. Um if we're, if we increase either side of that, we'd like to increase the community member side, not the ECSD employees. In trying to project budgetary um impacts, there's a lot of different factors at play. So I'll take you through this slowly because there's really both sides of it. There's the cost side and then the revenue side to try to figure out um what type of impact a school like this would have on the district. Um I know one of the reasons why we were asked to explore this would be it was a possible revenue um enhancer, revenue gainer for the district. Um so as we're going through, um that was something that we wanted to honor and keep in mind and, and um incorporate it into this. So uh pu- part of this is it has to do with how many students enroll. Um so there are economies of scale that get built into um a hundred student school versus a ten student school. And some of it is just startup costs. We need somebody to actually do the coordination piece on, on our end. Um and then um part of it is programming costs and everything else. Uh but we really do pick up some economies of scale as we get close to a hundred students. After that, there really isn't much, so that um at the bottom right-hand corner of the graph where we're looking at fifty-four hundred dollars, that's per student or per pupil cost. That really doesn't go down. So you can extrapolate that out to a five-hundred student school, a thousand student school and that's, it's really going to be the same, if that makes sense. Um so it doesn't mean that we, we don't think there's any chance we could get, you know, more than a hundred students. Another piece of this or the flip side of it is revenue. Um so our revenue really is based on who the student is. So if there are students who is um a newly enrolling student, not an open enrolling student, but they're already within the Eau Claire Area School District. So these would be homeschool families who are already here, whether they're homeschool traditional or whether they are um already accessing a different virtual reality school on through a different district. Um we, we have ninety-eight hundred dollars or um nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per pupil that we would get in funding from those students. Um students who are open enrolled from other districts into our district, um we would receive seventy-three hundred dollars. Um then the last um the piece of this would be a student from one of our existing schools. And this is something that we really wanted to think about and especially in conversations with other districts. Some districts have found that the majority of the students who are accessing their virtual school are actually students from, who were originally with their traditional schools. Um that's not everybody and there's a lot of school districts that have virtual schools that are um very much so the majority are open enrollees. Uh but we just want to present that as a possibility to you, um so that this was as transparent as possible. Um so it really, it really depends on how large the school is and then who's coming into it. So that's, this is where it, we really have that comparison too. Um the student populations that we're looking at, um and this fluctuates a little bit. Um our current homeschooling students within our boundaries. Um it was two thirty-nine. I think last time I checked a week ago, it was up to two fifty-four. It fluctuates a little bit. Um and, and then when it comes to how many students are accessing virtual schooling through a different district of that number, it's about half. So it's a little bit over a hundred students um who we have here, who are um within our boundaries but accessing virtual schools. Uh those are students who, many of them have come to our district and said that we, they would be very interested in considering a virtual option here locally. Um there are some homeschool students or, and families that are not interested at all and it doesn't matter what we're going to offer. So it's not reasonable to think that that whole number would come into a virtual school either. Um our current students there and then um I put the current Wisconsin students. This is a fictional number as far as our enrollees. Um but um obviously, we have a state of Wisconsin, um a, a whole state worth of students who might be potential open enrollees and we might get a handful of those coming from this district or that district. Um one of the, there are groups of students who might be more um likely to come in and enroll into a virtual school. Um and you think of students who are, um and I mentioned this before, but students with severe um uh physical impairments, um emotional and mental health impairments as well. Um and then students who, from other districts have um maybe been expelled. Um so are not necessarily safe to be in school, but are still looking for an educational opportunity somewhere. Um so those are the, those are different student populations we discussed. Uh so looking at all of those different factors that can play into revenue um and whether revenue is um, whether this is something that is going to be a cost, a net cost to the district or a net gainer to this district. If you look at a school of fifty students, um if we had sixty percent really homeschool students, so students who are already within our boundaries um and they're homeschool and they come into our school. Thirty percent are open enrollees from other districts. And ten percent are students who were attending South or Memorial or North or um you fill in the blank there. Um we would have a net gain of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. I mean, that would be annually. Um if we would have thirty percent um new enrollee and by new enrollee, again, it's local homeschool students. Um forty percent open enrollee, thirty percent current students. We're, we're really breaking even. That means two thousand dollars. Um and that could go, that's, that's really a rounding error at that point, but that's really that break even point because one student this way or that way.
Can I ask a question, Drew, quick?
Absolutely.
About logistically, the um, the process that you would need to have as far as enrollment for a charter school like this. Do you have the ability to limit the amount of seats available to in-district students?
Um that would be up to the, really the charter. Um and then it would be, it would I, so legally, yes, I don't know if we would want to do it.
My only, yeah, and I'm
I, I don't know if I've heard of another school district that's done that.
Yeah, I, it's just a question and I'm, I'm wondering just because I know that we um at both of our high schools are offering um some of that blended learning currently in, in more increased ways over the last couple of years with screen time and with some of the virtual. So I'm just wondering if, if that would allow for us to potentially limit the amount of in-district students that would be eligible because it's already in our district um for in-district students.
Yeah, and I
I don't know if that is, if there's an answer to that or
Um so, no, it's a very interesting question. I, in talking to other districts, I don't know of another district that's actually put out a number or tried to limit it directly because it could be interpreted as exclusionary. Um one of the things that I, that a lot of districts do do though is they would um suggest instead of accessing the whole charter school at first, if a student, um especially a middle or high school student wanted to do this, um an advisor would say, try, let's try or high school student wanted to do this, an advisor would say, try, let's try two virtual classes for a semester and try it out, and make sure it's going to be a good fit. And we'll try to use our counseling staff and our advising staff to do that, because we also really want to make sure that students aren't moving from something that was successful to something that isn't going to be successful for that student. So, I think we would want to do that anyway. There might be students who we have who are more successful in the virtual environment than in our traditional school too. And so it's, yes, it would cost more, it might be the, the right thing for that student. So it's, it's kind of difficult, difficult. So that, but this has made us ask a lot of different questions too about, so if we do open the doors, who's going to come in? And so that's, that's kind of where we're at as well. And so, one of the things that we're, there, there is some different avenues like Facebook groups and things that, that some of our homeschool families have really been helpful. I mean, I, I truly can't thank our homeschool families enough for their participation in this process. They, they've been absolutely wonderful and, and they've really helped get a lot of information. A lot of people in that community are excited about this idea as well. But one of the things that we'll, we'll be doing between now and when, when we come back here is we'll show you survey data from that community. So, because we're trying to get a better understanding of this and the proportionality that we might be looking at. Open enrollees from around the state are really going to be difficult to figure out what, what our numbers are going to be like. I don't know if we're going to know that until we open the doors, because we don't know if ten students from Milwaukee are going to randomly enroll with us. That's really, really tough. That being said, part of the budget is marketing, marketing and managing enrollment. So that would be an ongoing cost that's, all districts who have been really successful in this have said, marketing, putting money into marketing is an ongoing thing, is absolutely worth it. It all comes back to you.
Okay. Commissioner Klinkhammer and then Commissioner Harvick.
Yeah, and I think you're, you're probably going to get to it when you get to some of the survey data, but my question is, in talking to some of these other districts that have created and implemented these, these schools, do they have any sense of, of how much of their current population signed on for the, for the charter school? So when, do, do they give you any indication about whether it's ten percent or thirty percent, or is there any type of standard? Is that data you can get at, do you think?
I haven't seen anything consistent. So, there was a virtual charter school down by Milwaukee, and I, I want to say it was the Waukesha area that it was over fifty percent of their students were from inside their district, and they had a school of, I think about two-hundred students. I know Appleton is very, very large, they have five-hundred-and-fifty-three students, and the majority are open enrollees. And so, I think it depends. I also think that we want to be very careful about our marketing and just make sure that we're really reaching out to the families that we want to reach out to and extending services to, and, and really looking at this as a way to extend services to families that we've never provided services to before as well. So, was there another question?
I did.
Yep.
Yeah. So just on the calculation of the, the negative numbers there, two thousand and hundred thousand, presumably that's all because of the students who are currently in an ECSD school, accounting for zero as, as you have there. But I just, I'm trying to get my head around that, that zero-dollar figure. Because the revenue being zero is not exactly right. I mean, the net change to revenue is, is zero in a sense, but it's not that. See, what I, what I'm getting at is there's a certain cost to educating those students not in a virtual school, and then there's a certain cost to educating them in a virtual school. So zero doesn't seem like quite the right number there for me.
So, if you had fifty students, and fifty percent of those fifty is twenty-five students, if, and we have twenty schools in the district, so that would be a little bit over one student per school. We're probably not going to see savings from the one student per school as far as our FTE, which is our big cost associated with those students. So, you're absolutely right, as long as the numbers are large enough and they all come from one school, we'll start to see FTE savings within the schools. But if they're spread out evenly, it becomes really, really difficult to do that.
Yep.
And we, we wanted to be a little bit more conservative on this, I guess.
Yep, that makes sense.
There, there might be potential savings, absolutely. There would be also some savings when it comes to potentially food, transportation, things like that, the other, other things that come along with that student. So, you're completely right, it shouldn't be zero, but we also don't want to imply that it's going to be really clean, that it's going to be all of that stated and goes into it.
Sure, okay, thank you. Mr. Torres?
Have you estimated what would be the impact of, on our student count? You know, those students that are in the district that go, would go to the virtual school? Would that affect?
Yeah, I think that's what we're trying to get at with.
Connected to the funding that we receive per student?
So I think that's what we're going to try to get at through survey data. So I, there's nothing that we feel really comfortable standing by as far as projected numbers or anything like that for who we would get.
So, I guess my question is, how much money would we lose through losing students to the virtual school?
And again, it depends on how many, so.
So let's say there are ten.
Yes, so if, so if there are ten students, then really what we're getting back to is actually the, this diagram, where we're really just looking at cost. Because again, we're not, we're not exactly, it's not, it has nothing to do with the revenue side of the project, it all has to do with cost. So, so if you have ten students in a hundred student school, that's different than ten students who are the only students in that school. So if it's ten students, let's say you had ten students, all from very different schools, because that makes a difference too, but ten students from ten different schools within our, within our district, and there were no other students in that school to try to offset any of those costs, that was the entire school, then we'd be losing nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars per student. It might be a little bit less than that because of food and some of these other costs, but it would be right around that. So that times ten, so it would be ninety-thousand dollars, ninety-eight-thousand dollars.
That the Eau Claire school district would receive less, right?
Yes, yes. So that would, those would be our costs for educating those students that we couldn't necessarily rely on getting back in revenue. So, and it's, like I said, it's probably going to be a mixture. That's why when we, we looked at modeling, that's why we use kind of mixtures with all of this, with that bottom graph there. It's going to be some students from this category, some students from that category. And really as we got into it, it became far more about providing the most appropriate educational experience per child. That's really the goal of what we're trying to do. The other thing too is, is looking at the, the costs as well. The only models that we're really looking at as far as like an external provider would be something like Connections Academy, or there, there's a couple others that are out there. They're not the cheapest, they are the best. So they're, they're ones that we know have very high academic achievement, especially compared to the other rural option, or the other, sorry, virtual options. And they're ones that compete with the traditional educational system as well, for state test scores and everything else. And then also retention, and retention's a big deal when it comes to the virtual environment, because it's, it's a very different relationship to education that those students have. These are good questions. Anything else?
Commissioner Humber, please.
Thanks. I've, I've several questions. So let me kind of think about how I want to ask these. We presently, as far as a board looking at our budget, we've got a few things out there that we've, we are going to fit into a priority list budget-wise. And one of them is dual immersion, which, you know, get that shovel ready so that it's there for us when we're, you know, when we can do it, depending on when that is, and that's up for debate. We also had, back in January eighth of 2018, we had a motion at a school board meeting about, to denote support for the Initiative for New Directions in Education, Indy, to formally develop the proposal for the Little Red Nature Campus on behalf of the Eau Claire School District. There were lots of questions, they came back twice after that, and then pretty much have morphed in doing different, I'm not up to speed on that, so I'm not, I'm not, I haven't stuck my nose there really, but I know that's out there and I know our staff is involved in that, many of them actually. And they've kind of morphed some ideas that answer some of the questions the board has, but we haven't had them back, and we haven't closed that loop. As far as our LEAP Committee, it still is a charge under the committee that there, that charter choice goes through them, and I know you're changing some of that, but that, it's still there. So my question is, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, that's out in my brain, and I'm listening to you as to, you said, Drew, you need to get the right people around the table. I would say maybe there's a connection between this virtual piece and possibly Indy in what could be really crafted into something that we may not have thought about before, okay? I'm just seeing things that are hanging out there. So, I, I might suggest that, that might be, might be something you do. It's an amazing group of people from the community and from our staff. How many teachers too, as far as the, the compiling of all this with the curriculum and looking at all this, how many teachers, science teachers, English teachers and people did you involve from our staff relative to answering some of the curricular questions? Curriculum questions?
So we talked to many of our teachers, but including them on the, really the planning advisory and the potential governance board, very, very few, basically because of the time commitment. I mean, really that, that's what it came down to, and we'd much rather have a hundred conversations with individual teachers rather than a hundred conversations with one teacher when it comes to this, because we're really trying to understand how to provide a virtual educational experience that's pre-K through twelve, which means there's a lot of different offerings that we need to.
You do, I, when I worked with my CISA eleven job, I worked with a lot of virtual schools. I mean, across that CISA eleven, those thirty-nine districts, Granton was one, I mean, they do a really big one in, I think it's Granton.
Grantsburg.
And then there was another one in north of Rice Lake, I could forget all thirty-nine, but I mean, there were several, so. And I know that there's some concerns there relative to the churn or the fact that there's not always a connection to a person. So I, I asked that question too, as you looked at this, is there a connection for a hybrid in the sense that these students would be connected?
Yeah.
From time to time?
Very, very happy that you asked that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that, too, that came out loud and clear through both our, that initial advisory, but then also now through our governance board, is the values that people kept returning to. One was, was student achievement, but the one that actually came up more was a local connection, connection to other students, connections to, to teachers, and relationships. And then when we looked at national data of who does virtual schools well, it's ones that focus on relationships first, and, and those local connections first. So, part of this, and one of the reasons why our governance board has somebody from the L.A. Phillips Library on it, is really we're looking at whatever we end up with is having a community learning site or center as part of it. One of the things that we've learned in talking to a lot of families is they're more comfortable than not being in an ECSD building. And if it's at a public space where people feel very comfortable, where we can go in and provide services in a space that they're already accessing, and they're really familiar with it, then we can do a lot of hands-on learning opportunities, even within a virtual school.
But you see my connection with hands-on learning and project-based learning there, and a connection to what that other group is trying to put together? There's a huge connection there that I think would be well worth looking at. I lodge you in connecting to the homeschool people in our community, I've been talking about that since I first got on the school board, because I think our connection should be stronger, and I think, the one thing that bothers me though with alternative placements and all that are people stating they don't feel comfortable in our buildings, I think that's something we really have to ask why. And that's the same with the alternative program at CVTC where I'm told students, students can learn there and they can't learn in our schools. You know, I think we have to really look at that and find out why that is. So, thank you.
Okay. And there are a couple more slides that I'll go through quickly because it's almost ten o'clock.
Yeah, I just have, in, in your third slide, when you talk about the history of the project, it says, "In summer of 2018, meeting held that requested teaching and learning to explore initiating a virtual charter school for nineteen-twenty." I don't recall that meeting, what meeting was that?
So, that meeting was really between myself, Dr. Hardaback, President Luganville, Jim Schmitz, and Dave Wilber. And we're, at, at that point, it was just directing us to explore the option and to really bring something like this to you, to start listening to, to just having the opportunity to actually kind of consider it. I guess that, that was it at that point. So I don't know, Mr. Luganville, if you want to talk about that meeting at all?
I suppose it might be, in some respects, similar to the, the, some of the dual immersion conversations that began that process, but this one, I, I can speak for myself and maybe Dr. Hardaback, we, I know that we both went to conferences and things that both talked about virtual education, and we felt we should at least have something that's fleshed out that could be then brought to the board to consider as, to see if it, it would be a viable option for us. So that was the purpose of the meeting and them having the, doing the work that they've been doing.
I think it also came about in terms of the information that we received from the board about our sharing of information about open enrollment, in that we were losing students and money, revenue, because of open enrollment. And there had been some discussion on the board, not only this year but last year, about how we might kind of capture some, recapture some of those students into our attendance area. And so, as we were looking for ideas about how to increase and bring back students from open enrollment, and in talking with families who had left us, we found that we had about a hundred students, more than a hundred students, who were open enrolled across the state. And in some of our conversations with those families, they told us they would much prefer to have some type of virtual charter school here in Eau Claire and have their tax dollars here in Eau Claire, rather than sending them out to other areas of the state. So it seemed that if there was kind of a, maybe a little serendipity in terms of what we were hearing in different quarters, and the idea that if we were able to recapture students through a different kind of experience, what we sometimes hear from parents, it's not so much that they don't want to attend our schools, they're looking for a different choice. And that choice may be, for a virtual school, may have to do with their religious beliefs, it may have to do with their students' mental health, it may have to do with their students' learning style, it may have to do with their preferences about having their students enrolled in, you know, a structured school day. I mean, there are lots and lots of different reasons that parents make that choice. And it's not always about not liking school per se, it's just they want something different. And so, we started looking at this. Is this, just as we did with Spanish immersion, hearing from people in the community that this might be something that they would pursue? hearing from people in the community that this might be something that they would pursue?
Thank you. So, and a lot of the other pieces of this, we've already talked about. Actually, this is just the survey that I was talking about, sending out to families, really to assess interest level, but also to continue to get input about what programming people are looking for. So if they're looking outside of our district right now and finding something that better suits their needs, what does that look like? Because a lot of these programs are, it's really anything that you can imagine is filling the void with these things. So we want to find some options that are flexible enough for families, but still high-quality enough where we can feel comfortable putting the ECSD stamp of approval on it. Right now, our timeline is, we're in the process of solidifying bylaws, articles of incorporation, and a contract with that proposed governance board. Once we have those, our articles need to be submitted to the Department of Financial Institutions to gain incorporated status. That should actually say non-stock instead of no-stock. Nonprofit corporation. By the end of February, we hope to have all of that back so that we can apply for our 501(c)(3) status as well. During March, and really, actually, even starting in the end of February, we're going to be working with Department of Public Instruction to get input on our charter, the proposed charter, so that we know that whether or not you choose to approve it, if you do choose to approve it, it will get approved by the Department of Public Instruction. So you can rest assured on that. And then, we're hoping for April 1st to be coming back to you with a proposed charter for you to discuss and either approve or not approve at that time. And then, after that, it's, there's actually a lot of steps that are not listed in here, but it's, we need to get it up and running and start marketing and start staffing immediately after that. So, or if you don't choose to approve it, we don't. Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yeah, I was just thinking about some of the grant money that's out there offered for charter schools right now from the state. And I know we've missed that deadline, for the most part, for next year. But my understanding is, is that's a, we could apply for this for the following years. This wasn't the last time. Do you, I don't know offhand if that was, if this would qualify for those, do you know?
It would, yes. So...
So lots of our cost, if we wrote that grant and received it, could be offset in that sense?
Yes. Well, to a certain extent, I do think that grant is limited in how much they would provide. It's, I think it's absolutely worth going after for that second year. That first year, because of our timeline, we're probably not going to be looking at a 500-student school right away. It's probably going to be limited, and we're going to learn through that first year. Year two would probably incur more costs than the first year. So the grant would probably be more needed for us as a district in the second year, anyway. But yeah, that is something that we've talked about, and we were...
Excellent.
We just didn't have enough time to put it together.
To put it together.
And then we want to make sure that we have your support going forward and everything, too. Yes, so we're trying to do everything in the right order.
But I guess my real thought was, would this qualify for those dollars? And I'm glad to hear that it would.
Yes, yep. Thank you. Commissioner Torres?
Have you made any projections about the cost of staffing? Because the funds that come from the state for this project would not support staffing.
So, it really depends on how we structure the programming and curriculum side of the virtual charter. So, and I can get you more specific information about this. But the curriculum and instruction line there, the $4,075 per student, that really is, that really covers that teacher, whether we are contracting out through a provider or whether we're using one of our ECSD teachers. And really what we found was, regardless of the model, that number really doesn't decrease. It's really right around $4,000 per student. So that, it's a little bit confusing, because it could be money that we're sending out to a provider, it could be staffing money here. And, but at the end of the day, that's just going to be the cost there, too. So, you're right. If we're not able to use grant money for staffing, then that would be the line, that would exempt from being able to recoup from staffing. So if we're looking at, that is the majority of the money as we're getting up to that 100-student enrollment over on the right side, so that it would be an important piece to keep in mind. Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, thanks for this report. This, I mean, it seems to me like the gamble here is, the opportunity is twofold, in that providing an opportunity for potentially better achievement for students, another option that hopefully will be a better option because of the work on quality that you've already done in developing the plan. That's one opportunity. Another opportunity that's important is the possibility of bringing in some additional revenue for the district. Those are also the two risks, is that we somehow fail to create a better achievement alternative, and that we somehow fail to, and we've seen some ways to fail to generate money based on proportions of types of students. So it's really a kind of a gamble. But, and I think then it comes down to just sort of assessing those risks, for me, of what are the likelihoods? What's our exit strategy if we find it's not working? And, you know, sort of laying it out. I feel personally like it's an interesting gamble and worth exploring.
And the only thing that I would add to that, too, and this is something that's been very eye-opening for us as we've gone into the process, is the part of the strategic priorities that talks about community partnerships and the relationships that we've already started to build with some of the families that we've really traditionally never talked to. And that's an important part of this project that I don't want to get lost, is that it really does, it gives us a tool for providing services to families that are looking for something else. And at least we would have some influence over the quality level. Even if it takes us a little bit to get that to be perfect and what we want it to be, at least we have control, and at least they have a voice in that process rather than contracting with another charter school in Milwaukee or something like that, too. Commissioner Vu, did you, you said you had something?
Yeah, I just... Thank you. Before we go way too far, and I just thought I'd say my piece. I like the idea that you said, "This is a tool to look at way for helping students to move forward." And I wonder how much of that, looking forward, align with what we are trying to do. And that is, our desire is to prepare all students for post-secondary success. So the goal is to meet the needs of all students. But then the research shows something contradicting, that graduate rate is low, and that the, most of the report about, so far, what's happening is not too successful. So my question is, is this the right tool that we want to invest in? And what prompt this tool at the first place? Are we going to venture into this and discover that, nope, it's not that the right tool? I am leaning toward, we find the right tool and make it work. And that, too, is meant to address the issue of all students being successful for secondary preparation.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu. I want to just say a few words. I think that we're, and I understand the lateness of the hour. I think we're in a time as a district where we have a lot of competing priorities, a lot of different topics, a lot of different, a lot of different issues that we're considering. But we have very few that are able to, if structured correctly, achieve additional revenue to the school district, growing the students that we can reach, and meeting a population of students really on both ends of the spectrum in terms of performance and achievement. Because with a virtual school and the flexible learning environment, you're able to meet, I think, the needs of students who need accelerated learning, or to make up credits, or have potentially a mental health or a different challenge that would make virtual education right for them. Or you attract other students into virtual education, some who we have lost in our district, who are seeking virtual education as a way to get ahead, as a way to, for, again, accelerated learning, to get into post-secondary opportunities sooner, or workforce opportunities sooner. So I see that as a real strength. And, you know, I think that we've taken risks as far as new programs as a school district before with charter schools. I think the best example is McKinley. Now, what made McKinley successful, though, is the people behind it. Because McKinley has a real heart as a program. It has a heart and soul. You know, people like Nevada Friends, who keep that place running. So I think that that's a really important component of this, is, I think that if structured correctly, this has the opportunity to be a really, a really exciting new venture for our district. It'll rely on what team is in place. It'll rely on what the mission is and what the vision is of it, and who it hopes to serve. And I think it's a, I think it's a great start that we're already hearing about. It hopes to serve those students and families that we have traditionally not served, for whatever reason. That's huge. I think that that's, that's one of the things that maybe hasn't been said in as many words, but for the first time in district history, considering something like this, it would be, for the first time in district history, we would have the opportunity to attract students instantaneously from any zip code in the state of Wisconsin. That's an exciting opportunity for any school district, if you can do it right. So I certainly, I think it's something worth seeing through to the point of allowing something to get more fleshed out so that we see more detail and can have the conversation about where it fits within other aspects of the system and decide whether or not to move forward with it. One of the things I'll say to take back to your group, the marketing piece, the marketing budget, I think would need, will need to be higher. So, I think it's, if, I, maybe not. I'm just thinking it might have to be higher. Just based on, based on looking at some of the ways that other systems in the state do market these programs. It's pretty vigorous, it's pretty aggressive on television, radio, social media, in movie theaters. So, just, and maybe you've already based it off of others, but I was just thinking, maybe it needs to be higher than that.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, too. Really, the marketing piece is, that's a really tough line to get a beat on, because some of the providers that we're talking to actually provide that just because they want actually high enrollment. High enrollment for us is high enrollment for them. So it's very much so free. We, just to kind of keep in mind, too, that this is per student. So if we, even with this, if we're looking at 50 students, it's $25,000 that we'd be putting into marketing. So it's not nothing, but, but, you know, we're also trying to figure out, you don't want to put $100,000 into marketing, and then all of a sudden, we are disappointed by our student enrollment, and we can't get that money back, too. So, so that's, we're trying to figure that out a little bit, too.
Right.
It's a tentative number.
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
You know, I think one of the things, too, to keep in mind about a virtual school is, you have some flexibility in terms of starting small. You don't have to go to a full-fledged program with 100 students or something like that. You can start out very small, pilot some programs, pilot some online materials, see what works and what doesn't work, and kind of build a, you know, like I said, start slowly like we've done with other programs, pilot them and see what the benefit is. And I think that addresses your question in that the gamble. You know, you're not starting off with a huge chunk. You're kind of putting your toe in the water and seeing what happens and how much interest there really is.
Yeah, I think as well, to make this very sustainable, both financially but also educationally, the more responsive we can be to the families that we're serving, and especially the, that local, traditionally homeschool group who aren't accessing us. If we can give them a voice and honor that voice as we're going through and figuring our way through programming for the first few years, they're going to feel valued in the process. And they'll help make it successful, too, because virtual school is unique in the sense that especially with pre-K5 virtual schooling, it highly involves the parents or guardians. They're a very important piece of the process. And whether it's successful or not is as much, you know, really in partnership with them as it is even with the child. So it's really a big piece for them to tell us what they want and for us to be responsive to that. Are there any other comments or questions on this?
I'll make it short, but yeah, homeschoolers in the district, I think, is what you're talking about, right? And they just happen to be also the most profitable of the groups, are they not? And so, again, that's, you know, just strategically marketing and picking who you're going to market to. That group should be high on the list, I think. And that's a form of marketing, you could say, what you're talking about, but it's also a form of helping to ensure achievement.
Right.
And you have more in your presentation, right? Just the timeline part?
No, no, actually, I think we are done, right?
Oh, just the timeline, the proposed time, okay.
We're done.
Okay.
But we can keep going. There's lots more we can talk.
That's good.
One thing I just want to add is that Mr. Sevlin's and Yoeman's work with this, some of the things that you've suggested, he's spent already at least a dozen different meetings with different homeschool consortiums within the district specifically to do what you talked about, Commissioner Harder and Commissioner Luganville, to make that personal connection, do some marketing individually with that group of folks. And I'm highly confident we're going to see engagement from those folks that sit outside both ECSD and really almost any virtual program right now. So we're quite confident that we're going to have some return on investment, so to speak, from that group as soon as we turn the lights on.
Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you. I'll look forward to hearing more on this, so, thank you. And this is a committee report, so are there members of the audience who wish to speak? Okay. So, because it is after 10 o'clock, are, would board members be okay with moving items 10B and 10C to the March 4th meeting? Would that be okay with, would any board members object to that? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to move the items 10B and 10C to the March 4th agenda. Some more? Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
I'm just wondering, given the conversation tonight, if we should get on the agenda and update from the Indy community group to the board?
Okay.
Can discuss that and see?
Sure. Thank you. Any other requests for future agenda items? Commissioner Pika, you have one? Oh, okay. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more?
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org.